Item number two is roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Street? Absent. Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number four, approval of the agenda. I'm sorry. Item number three, prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler?
Ma'am. Lord, we are meeting today to kick matters of business. Get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move item G under new business to the very next item that we will be taking on right now, be prior to citizens' comments. I want to make a motion, within this motion, to suspend the rules to allow citizens to speak during this item that are signed up tonight. I want to get Ms. Jones to ask anyone that's on there if they're here to speak on item G. They should be allowed to speak then, since we're going to do this prior to citizens' comments. And we're doing this so Commissioner Jones can get to the high school to the game. That's my motion.
Also, adding to that motion, I would like to defer item 9A. Staff has, needs additional time to complete this report, so that will be an addition to the motion.
Second.
Jones, if you could ask the crowd for a show of hands if they want, just call their name and see if they want to speak during, about item G. It is the partnership with the county for the ballpark upgrades.
Well, don't, don't we need to have a vote on the, on the motion? We had the first and the second.
Well, it, we need to find out if this is part of the motion.
Okay.
Is there anyone here to speak on the partnership with the parks?
You don't, you didn't sign up. Only if you signed up for citizens' comments, we want to allow you, okay.
Sam Mangrum signed up. I think he raised his.
Perfect.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Roll call, please. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five, citizens' comments.
We just moved G ahead of that.
Sorry, G. It will be new business, item G, will be heard right now.
Mayor, if we could, I would like to invite Commissioner Ricky Jones to the podium to speak.
Okay, and I'm going to read G. Resolution, new item G is resolution 13-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to partner with Williamson County on upgrades and improvements to the Fairview Ballpark.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I really do thank you guys for serving Fairview. It's been home all my life, and I know sometimes it can be hard up here, but I do appreciate it. And I hope tonight, put a copy of a resolution that we can file, late file, at our next meeting, so we can get this ball rolling. The resolution says, a resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Fairview for new recreational ballfield lighting at the Fairview Ballpark in appropriating and amending the 2022-23 capital projects budget by $429,000 and $522, I know we had discussion with the parks people and you, the people at the parks were just looking at a little bit different figure than this. This resolution came back with an increase on what we had discussed. Gordon Hampton, who is members of the Parks and Rec, will be able to answer questions why there's a difference on this resolution. And if you guys discuss it and give me direction, I would like to know which direction this city would like us to take before our next county commission meeting. If, if it passes you guys, I'll take it forward. If you guys think something should be different, I can also take that. And we'll take it before the full commission next time around. I do want this to happen because we do have the World Series. I think it'll be good for our community and good for people coming into Fairview to see us having the state of the art lights. And I do appreciate you guys willing to work with us on this. And maybe this will be just the first step in other projects we might work together on as we go forward in the future. So I appreciate each of you. There is a ballgame. I'm probably wondering what the score is right now. But if it's okay with you guys, I will ask if y'all have any questions and then go do my other job. Questions or anything that you would like to ask me.
I don't have any, Mayor. We'll, we'll talk to Gordon and we'll get back with you.
Y'all get back with me. I appreciate it. I really do appreciate each one of you. Do either of y'all need copies of this for the record?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hampton.
Mr. Hampton, would you like to come speak, please?
I'm Gordon Hampton, Director of Parks and Recreation for Williamson County. And like Commissioner Jones, I do appreciate the fact that you are all here and serving the community. And I'm glad to be here to talk to you about this particular resolution. As Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones said, this is something that the mayor has agreed to push ahead of the schedule for some of the projects that the county is going to be doing in Parks and Recreation. I understand.
Let me, let me say it's Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Yes, Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Not Mayor Lisa Anderson.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, yes. So Mayor Anderson has given me his, Mayor Rogers Anderson, county mayor, has, you know, given me the green light to come down here this evening and speak with you to answer any questions that you might have about this resolution and how we got there and where we intend to be. So I'll just let you guys sort of guide me as to how well you want to be informed on this, what you'd like to find out.
Mr. Hampton, based on the, the bids that were turned in, what played into the decision to go with someone that's, say, $200,000 more?
That's a great question. You know, Commissioner Johnson, what we, what we're doing in the county is we have an initiative that was sponsored and put together by Schneider Electric. Schneider is a major electrical contractor based out of Cool Springs. They're a national corporation. They call Williamson County home now. This is the third initiative that Schneider has worked with Williamson County on. The first one being working with the school system and train to bring higher quality HVAC systems to all the schools. And there's an incentive there, what calls the payback for more efficient HVAC, HVAC systems. Saves the county money, and there is a tracking method for that. And so by making those upgrades, Williamson County Schools saves considerable money. And in the long run, it actually pays for that project. The second initiative that Schneider has done with the county was to completely revamp the administrative complex on West Main Street where the county offices are. Schneider came in, and once again, the purpose of that entire initiative was to save the county taxpayer money because the facility operates at a much more efficient level. And in doing so, naturally saves the county a lot of money. This initiative is strictly about changing out a lot of the electrical components that the county has throughout, you know, its system, not necessarily just with parks, but also with other facilities. The parks' outdoor field lighting is a major expense for Williamson County Government and especially my department, which is Parks and Recreation. We have ballfields all over the county, and the lighting systems in those, in those parks are antiquated. They're, which means obviously they're out of date, they are not efficient anymore, and they are a cost drain to our resources because, because of the age, the bulbs are having to be replaced at a much faster level. The other problem with that is with all the issues with logistics, supply and demand, in many cases, we're having trouble even having our contractors be able to have the right amount of bulbs, the type of bulbs we need to even make the replacements when lights go out. The biggest issue is the safety for the participants that are on the field. If the lights aren't burning effectively, if the aluminums on the, down on the field aren't measuring at safe levels, then Williamson County, and to a certain extent, the Fairview Recreation Association, is liable for any type of injury that could be sustained because of inadequate lighting. So it is a safety issue. I certainly wouldn't want one of my grandchildren to be standing there at home plate and not have adequate lighting where they couldn't be able to pick the ball up and protect themselves, you know, from a fast pitched or hard hit baseball or softball. As a result of trying to make these upgrades throughout the county and following the Schneider initiative, the reason that we are going with the Musco lighting is because, one, that is the lighting that Schneider Electric has initiated as the primary lighting source for this project. Number two, if you do research on athletic field lighting, Musco is the industry standard for sports lighting. As we speak right now, the person that is going to be installing the lights, if this gets approved, is lighting, relighting Vanderbilt's football stadium. And the Musco lighting is, is known throughout the, the country as the premium. It's in Major League ballparks, it's at NFL stadiums, it's, it is state-of-the-art LED lighting. It has all the features that you can, you know, have with remote control, shut offs. And the best thing about this also is that it has a 25-year warranty for every bulb replacement, all light replacement, and all costs associated with replacing the lights. 25-year warranty. Now, I'm not going to be the Parks and Director, Recreation Director for 25 years, 25 years from now, but I can assure you that whoever is here 25 years from now is going to be much appreciative for the fact that this is the package that we're going to have. The final reason, Commissioner, that we're going with the Musco lighting is that I don't think it's fair for the City of Fairview to have a system that's not going to be the same system as the other parks in Williamson County. If Fairview teams are traveling to other parks and playing after all this light initiative gets brought online, and the quality of lights, say, at Grassland or Bethesda or wherever some of these girls might go and play softball, or boys might go and play baseball, if it's superior to the product that's at Fairview, I'm going to be the one to hear about that because people want to know why hasn't, why it in Fairview's lights the same as the other parks in the county. So from a standpoint of maintaining all of this, it's easier for us maintenance-wise to have the same system so everybody's operating the same way. All of it's on the same warranty. We're looking at a 25-year warranty, and it is standard that, that Reynolds Electric out of Dixon is the one that will be doing the installation. They're close by. Fairview is actually the closest park to where their home offices are over off Highway 96. So they're very close by if there is ever a need for them to get here and address any issue at the park. And most importantly, this is the industry standard, state-of-the-art lighting, and that's what the Fairview ballfields will have. I hope that answers your question.
What is, if this were approved tonight, what is the timetable?
The timetable, I just got a new contract from Musco today, or a new quote, which basically would be turned into a contract and which guarantees the 25-year warranty. It also locks in the price that we've already mentioned, which is $429,522. That's the total price. The, the timeline on it is that if you approve this tonight, I've already gotten the resolution written for the county commission meeting on Monday, March 13th. Commissioners Lennox and Jones will have to go to the mayor's office and sign those. And they plan on doing that tomorrow if you approve this tonight. So it's a late file resolution, but the mayor and his chief of staff has already assigned it a place on the, in the agenda if it gets approved here tonight. The 13th, the county commission approves this expenditure. Then on the 14th, we can turn this over to the county attorney to get the contract executed. And then there's an eight-to-10 week lead time for the manufacturing of the lights to take place. And then the installation should happen the first part of June of '23, which gives that plenty of time for us to be able to get those lights installed in time for the event, which is the last week of July, if I understand that correctly. So we're in a, we're in a good window to, you know, to get this approved, to get the lights manufactured, and have them delivered and installed about a month before the actual event takes place.
So we would be the first ballpark in the county to have the lights installed?
That is correct.
Commissioner Jones, before he left, mentioned future projects and partnering with us. What would WCPR be in, where would you stand in regards to the use for the last 10 years? The Titans have needed a place to call home to play football, practice-wise. Now, of course, they use the high school field now that we have turf and there's no wear and tear there. And also the possibility of outdoor basketball courts. If the city had property that we could provide, as we would be giving you money to put lights at your property, would the county partner with us to build a football field and outdoor basketball courts on city-owned property?
So that's a, that's a really good question. And the answer is yes. I think that there is a way that we could, you know, work. Historically, when you look at the, the way that County Mayor Anderson has dealt with the municipalities across the county, is that when there is a demand for recreational services that the city cannot provide on their own, then there's a memorandum of understanding that takes place where we will partner with the municipalities to bring these additional services online. I know you have a Parks Department in Fairview, just like there's a Parks Department in Brentwood, Thompson Station, Franklin, Spring Hill. And every one of those municipalities that I've mentioned, you know, we have projects in each one of those that we share the cost with the municipalities to bring them online. In each case, after they're brought online, the county, through an agreement, will operate and maintain those parks going forward, so there's no duplication of services between municipalities' park systems and the county park system. If it's own property that you own, you will, the, the standard operating procedure on that is that you will continue to own the property. However, for the county to maintain those facilities that we would agree to finance together, the county would then lease that property from the city and for, you know, like a dollar a year. So you would still have ownership of the property, but the county would have a, that, we used to do 99-year leases, but the county attorney, I think the state of Tennessee changed that law. And now a lease on property like that can't exceed 40 years. So let's say, for example, that you identified a piece of property and you were able to appropriate funds to, to build another multipurpose field and an outdoor basketball court and, and let's say, a splash pad, you know? And you would talk to us about partnering on, on something like that. Generally, because we're doing these things at other, you know, parts of the county, we would be able to, you know, put together a budget for something like that and present it back to you. And you would decide whether or not you were in a position to be able to, one, financially, you know, take on that responsibility, and two, if you wanted to bring those services online to, for your residents and your constituents here. We can absolutely do this because we, we do it everywhere. I'm going to the City of Brentwood on March the 9th, and we're going to partner with the City of Brentwood on an indoor tennis complex that's $11.5 million. And they've agreed to pay for half of that. The county will, and it's, it's already in our capital budget because we feel like, right now, the way things are going, both parties will probably approve this. And, and we've got to get the ball rolling. But that's just another example of, you know, how these, these joint mutual partnerships work to bring these services online. So anything that you want to see in the future in the City of Fairview can always be discussed. And I will champion anything that's recreational, that serves the recreational needs of this community. I will. And I'll tell you, you know, I, I did have always championed for things to happen in Fairview. You know, it's under my directorship that we did all the renovations at the rec center. And we've done renovations, and you guys contributed to a Phase One, we could call it that, at the ballpark, which I think you're, the people in the park appreciate what was done. And, you know, and you get a lot of credit for that because we really kind of pushed that agenda to get all those things upgraded out there. And the park looks, looks great. And between our staff and the folks from the Fairview Recreation Association, the park is well-maintained, and it is absolutely used. You can be very proud of that. The user hours out there are some of the tops in all of our systems, in all of our parks in the county. The Fairview Park is a much-used park and a big piece of this community. And there can be more in the future. I assure you, there could absolutely be more recreational cooperation between the county and the city.
I will say that, of course, I've known you for decades, and even before you were director, you showed a great care and concern for Fairview over the years.
Thank you.
Back to that lease, Mr. Hampton, does that mean that all the liability insurance and everything falls under the county umbrella?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just caught my, caught my ear pretty good there.
Any expense associated with running these, these partnerships like that, all that expense is taken on by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor? Mr. Hampton, with this lighting initiative, is the plans to put lights in, in the park eventually? But what is your timeframe for lights on all your, your parks, for the LED lights? I remember last year when you came here, you said it was in the, the future plan. Is there a timeframe for Fairview's lights?
I, I don't know exactly when Fairview would come online. I was just, Commissioner Jones and I were talking about that just a few minutes ago. So to walk you through how the, this initiative would work and how the, the lighting for the rest of the county and how that's going to fall in, the, our, our budget process is going on right now. And in our budget right now, we have capital requests totaling about $18 million. Now, I know good and well I'm not going to get $18 million, but I don't mind asking for it. So there are going to be some things that are going to get cut. I do know that you throw enough things against the wall, some of the stuff is going to stick. The things that I think will, the items that I think will stick will be the, the facility in Brentwood, you know, for tennis. And that is if Brentwood, you know, follows through on their end of that, and this lighting initiative. The total cost for the lighting initiative, and this is probably in a Phase One-type situation, is $4 million. So if the county commission approves this $4 million lighting initiative in June, that $4 million will be funded through the sale of bonds. The county does a bond sale issuance every November. So November of '23 is when that $4 million would be made available. Once that money is made available, it is put into an account. At that point in time, we would then work the arrangements out with Musco, who is who this initiative is with. And we would get all the contracts written, and we would start to figure out a timeline on when these lighting projects would take place, from Brentwood to, to Spring Hill and from Fairview to Nolansville and all points in between. And we have a lot of parks out there, and we have a lot of light poles. To get all of these light poles retrofitted is going to take more than a year. And the biggest issue that we're going to have, and our biggest challenge, is the immense weight of a boom truck. And the way the boom trucks have to get to most of the lighting, light poles, is to get into and onto grass. And during the winter, it's virtually impossible because of the weight of those pieces of equipment. So we're talking about selective days and times, short windows of times, where they'll be able to go out into these parks. There is no way that I can stand here tonight and give you any specific timeline on when Fairview would fall into that. But I could assure you, it would be sometime between '24 and '26.
Just out of curiosity, are the schools on that, that lighting improvement plan?
No, the schools have already, some of the schools have already been, had their lights upgraded. And I'm not sure about what they're doing because the last major expense for the schools, obviously, were the conversion of the turf fields. And, you know, and just, just so you know this also, when you start to talk about things that you're going to have in the future, you know, you, you know what your growth here is here better than I do. But rest assured, the demands on the, at the school are going to be pushed even more because in '25, lacrosse will become a T double S double A sanctioned sport, which means if Fairview chooses to have a lacrosse team, which I'm pretty sure they will, if not immediately, very soon, they're going to play on that field at the high school because it is, was in the memorandum of understanding, when they funded all of those high schools system-wide, that soccer, lacrosse, if it ever became a T double S double A sport, would share those turf fields with the football team. And so that's going to put even more demand on there, which could possibly force out some of the youth organizations because the girls play in the fall and the boys play in the spring. And so when you start looking ahead, you have to really think about. And so when you start looking ahead, you have to really think about long-range planning for meeting the needs because if they displace that football program over there off of the turf, then, you know, it's gonna be back to the old stadium and, you know, and that's getting older and, and we're dealing with things there. But yeah, there, there are certainly some recreational projects that should, uh, and could be considered, you know, long-term. But the schools are not part of the initiative, but they probably should be because every, every kid that goes to the school, they come to us and the rec association every day at 3:30. They don't turn into pumpkins. It's the same kids that are in the classrooms in the, during the day that then are doing recreation in the afternoons and at night and weekends. And so we have to be prepared for that. Your, your elementary schools are, are busting at the seams.
Mayor, I'd like to hear from the, the two citizens. If there's no more questions for Mr. Hampton right now, then I'm sure I'll have some more questions, maybe for Mr. Hampton and definitely for Tom, after we hear from the two citizens.
Mr. Hampton, I, I appreciate you coming out and speaking to us tonight. I've always been supportive of us partnering with Williamson County. When I hear 11.5 million dollars to a indoor soccer complex, I understand partnering's important, but when the county's doing over 5 million dollars to Brentwood, it makes me think this small amount easily could probably be covered by the county and, you know, to help a small community that, you know, doesn't have the budget of like a Brentwood or Franklin.
Well, the, Mayor, the reason that Brentwood is getting 5 million is because they're putting in 5 million.
I get that.
We, we would not be building a tennis facility in Brentwood if it wasn't for their, they're also giving us the property as well. So that, that is, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, but it is strictly a, a, a dollar-for-dollar match. And actually, uh, they're actually giving us the land and you know the value of land in Brentwood. And so for the footprint of a 100,000-square-foot tennis complex, that's a considerable, uh, expense on top of that. But I, your point's well made. I understand it.
As long as they didn't condemn it.
Pardon me?
I said as long as they didn't condemn it.
Yeah, they're not gonna condemn their own property. I don't think.
No, I'm just saying if they, as long as they didn't condemn it to gain ownership in the first place.
Oh, yeah, no, this is at Crockett Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other question I have... So Musco Lighting is considered superior. Whose determination made that decision that they're superior? Did, I mean, were their lighting companies across the board looked at and determined that they weren't as adequate as Musco?
Yes, ma'am. That's, you know, Schneider Electric, you know, that's, their, their reputation is to make determinations like that, you know, to determine, you know, what's gonna be the best long-range value for a project like this. When you're looking at, at using a, a system, in this case, a lighting system, that is gonna provide the safest playing surface vision, you know, capabilities, it's guaranteed for 25 years and, and it has the capability with all of the remote control possibilities of turning the lights on and off, you know, from a telephone, things like that, um, that's, that's what Schneider is supposed to do. They're supposed to vet out all the options and choose the best option for their client, and in this case, it's Williamson County and the city of Fairview. So I have all the trust in the world in the experts and Schneider is, is, is one of the, you know, biggest consulting firms for, uh, electrical, uh, both corporate and regional electric, uh, in the United States. And, you know, if they are putting their endorsement behind Musco, I have zero reason to, uh, to dispute that. Also, all of the, uh, new lighting that all the Williamson County schools are using, Commissioner Butler, are, is Musco lighting as well. So Williamson County is, is basically saying, everything that we're gonna light from sports fields going forward is all gonna be the same product so that we can just have that, you know, economy of scale, uh, to, you know, have all of our systems, uh, all the same.
So the company in Dixon who is doing the installation, what is the name of that company?
Reynolds Electric.
And is Reynolds Electric doing the, the, um, installation in Brentwood as well?
Brentwood is, uh, the, the, the facility that I'm talking about partnering with Brentwood is, does it.
Well, and I don't mean the tennis facility. I mean, are.
They will do everything.
So the, the company in Dixon, Reynolds, right?
Yes.
Um, they will do all of Williamson County?
They're doing all of Williamson County. They're doing Vanderbilt Stadium. They're, they're, they are the, the installer and contractor.
They're the subcontractor for.
For Musco.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Schneider.
They were doing all of Williamson County?
Well, no, no, not for Schneider.
For Musto.
For Musco, yes. And they are doing every lighting project for the county. They do all of, they've done all of our lights. Uh, they did the lights out there, the current lights.
And if there was an issue, they would, they would come and take care of the issue with the lights?
Absolutely. We've got a great relationship. Doug Reynolds is the principal there and, uh, he's, he's been, uh, a partner to this department for a long time. Very trusted.
That's, any more questions?
All right. Thank you for considering this and I appreciate you allowing me the chance to talk to you about it.
Thank you for coming out here.
You're welcome.
All right. So we have, um, Shannon or, yes, Judge Crutcher, do you wanna?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Tonight, just, just Shannon Crutcher, not Judge Crutcher. Treasurer of the FRA, Fairview Recreation Association. As Mr. Hampton said, we have a significant number of kids that are involved in our programs, both baseball and softball. The Fairview Titans have a significant number of children that are involved in their football program. All of those programs or sports use the Fairview Ballpark to both practice baseball and softball, practice football. They don't play football there anymore because of the, uh, the turf field. But there's a significant number of people that, that go in and out of that park. I would say probably more so than in any facility other than the schools themselves that are located in the city of Fairview. So we have this World Series that's going to be played, uh, in July, the end of July, 1st of August. We'll have 22 teams, uh, between the ages, with girls, between the ages of seven, or, excuse me, yes, seven and 10, seven and 10, uh, from all over the southeast that'll be coming to our community to play in the Dixie Softball World Series. It's not just the World Series that we're necessarily looking at to try to get this lighting installed for. Certainly, that's gonna be nice, uh, because of a couple of issues, and Mr. Hampton hit on it. There are significant, um, outages at the park at any given time due to the antiquated system that, that is there. We have, uh, lights that are not, uh, pointed correctly that cause blind spots in certain areas of the field. If you're playing on one field and look across at another field, it's, it's very easy to not, not be able to see the ball after you have, after you have looked over at the other field because of the lighting and how it's pointed. So one of the things, when they put these LED lights in, to my understanding, is they not only, you're not only installing a, a much, uh, better product than what currently exists, but you also have the ability to laser point those things so that they, they are covering and producing the lumens that they're supposed to produce for a specific area of each field. So you don't have those blind spots and then low-lit spots, uh, in various areas of the field. So it's very important, not just from an aesthetic standpoint, but also from a safety standpoint, which is, which is a big concern. And this is not, again, not just something that's gonna be used for one tournament at, at one point in time. This is gonna be used for years and years and years to come and it's gonna greatly enhance the quality of our athletic fields at the ballpark. The other, the other issue that we have is the, um, getting people out there to make, uh, improve, or, excuse me, make repairs to the lights when they're out is, is, is just difficult at times. Um, and, uh, and again, I, I don't want there to be lights out on the field, certainly not during this event or any event going forward. Uh, certainly, we appreciate the city's consideration. We, of course, I was here to speak on the issue, I think sometime middle of last, uh, last year. And so as you can see, we've kinda worked through this process for, for a little less than a year, trying to get this accomplished between, between then and, and, uh, July of this year. So I appreciate the county's willingness to partner with the city and certainly hope that the city will, uh, consider this resolution and, and enter into this partnership to get this, uh, this project completed. Thank you.
Mr. Crutcher, um, are there other parts to the project that we are looking at as well, other than lighting?
Well, initially, yes, uh, but because of the increase in the, the price associated with just the lighting, I don't know that any of that would necessarily be doable, um, unless there's some other funds that may be available from the FRA. I know we have some funds that, that we're looking at using to potentially move in a fence on one of the fields. Um, and then we had talked about doing some batting cages, but I don't know, um, to answer your question, with the funds that are, that are being proposed in both the resolution that the city could potentially pass and the resolution that would be presented to the county commission, there would be no additional funds available in that number to do any of those other projects. Could that answer your question?
I have clarification on that if, if you want me to speak now. Okay, just for public knowledge, when I brought this, uh, to be placed on the agenda, based on two of the current bids we had on the lighting project, I had asked the city to appropriate 125,000 to the lighting project, 25,000 to the batting cage pavilion project, and 7,500 to the moving in of the fence on Field Three. We had a meeting with WCPR. Rick Taylor, the assistant director, came out, uh, and had a meeting with us and they were willing to partner with us in, in those areas. This additional money was just brought to my attention a couple hours before the meeting tonight. I had no idea of this. Uh, at first, I thought there's no way I would support it. Uh, I still have some questions for Tom, so I'm not saying I'm supporting it 100% right now either, but the 25-year warranty may be the thing that puts me over the edge in supporting it. Mr. Crutcher, I, I, depending on how Tom answers the funding questions, uh, if we don't have any more money to throw to it, and he does think that we have the money to move forward with this, which he must, or I don't think he would have allowed it on the agenda in his talking with Mr. Hampton, knowing what the project was gonna cost. So he must have something for us when I ask him these questions. I, I don't know about the batting cage right now, but I think the FRA may, could partner with the county on the fence project.
Yeah, the FRA currently has approximately $60,000 in its account, which is a significant amount of money for a, a recreation association. Um, and we have, we had already planned on using some of that money to allocate to these, some of these projects. I mean, obviously, we couldn't, we couldn't come anywhere near matching the lights.
Right, right.
Uh, but moving in a fence or potentially doing a batting cage, there's, there's money there for that.
Just, just for you to know that, that the FRA has money that we can partner with the county. And I know you weren't there that night, Gordon, but Rick said that whether you're partnering with the city or us, if we were putting up half the money, we could still move forward with a project. So, uh, I wanted to make, to make that clear. And just, uh, to clear up everything, I do sit on the board with Mr. Crutcher, I'm the vice president of the organization. We are both in non-paid positions. I just want to make that clear to everybody that we do not draw a salary or a check for being on this board. Uh, and if I do vote for this, I just want that known to the public.
The other thing, the, uh, the lighting, sometimes I can, you can drive by the ballpark and, and that, again, those fields are used by a lot of people, a lot of different, not only just the FRA, the Fairview Titans, but there's, there's travel ball programs that are located here in the, in the, uh, the city that use that facility. There's individuals that just go out there at random, at random times. Middle school, middle school uses the facility.
Kids using the playground.
Correct. But, uh, at, at, at certain times, I mean, I've drawn, I've driven by there late at night and the, and the lights are still on and sometimes I don't think there's anybody out there. So having the capability to shut those things down or getting an alert when they're still on is, is important, um, certainly for the county, um, but it's, it's something that, uh, that happens quite frequently. So. Any other questions for me?
I just knew that there were other projects being looked at and I wanted to, to see how that, you know, how that was gonna be handled.
There are, but, but if I had to prioritize those projects, I mean, the, the lighting is probably the most significant. I mean, not probably, it is the most significant issue. Um, it's just, it is, it is, I mean, Mr. Hampton said it best. I mean, it's antiquated, there are, there are significant issues. We've got some lights that are just pointing straight down at the ground and, and, uh, so it, it, it is in desperate need of an upgrade. And so if we're gonna put those things in order, the lighting's at the top of the list, for sure.
Now, Mr. Hampton, you said something about the end of July. That's when the World Series starts, so.
The 1st of June. He said it would be completed by the 1st of June.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I misunderstand? The 1st of June, is that, is that guaranteed or?
Yes, I, I talked to the folks, uh, today from Musco. Um, once again, they changed the, uh, I told them there was a couple of things that I had to have for this deal to, for me to even stand here and present it. One, they had to change the warranty from 10 years to 25, which they did. Secondly, they have to guarantee, and we'll write that in the contract, that the, uh, lights will be installed and ready within like 30 days. Now, of course, there'll be also things in the contract where if there's natural disasters or anything like that, you know, that it takes precedent over, you know, certain things like that, but things that are out of, you know, human error. But yes, I can, I feel very, very comfortable in saying that they will definitely be done, uh, in a timeline that'll be suitable for this event.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mangrum?
Good evening. I wanna start off by saying, and most of y'all here that know me know I'm a, I'm a huge fan of, of giving the youth athletes of Fairview their best opportunity and give them the latest and greatest of everything. And I do think lights at the park would be great. I just find it a little odd, um, that we have so many other youth sports organizations that could also use significant funding. Mr. Crutcher just mentioned that the middle school baseball team uses that. We're one of the only middle schools in the county that doesn't have a baseball field. So there is just some funding. The Fairview Titans, and I know Mr. Johnson brought it up, the Fairview Titans, I stood right here several years ago as the director of the Fairview Titans practically begging for some funding to get them a practice field. They have a place to practice, it's not ideal because they have youth, or fall baseball now, so they have to practice and coordinate that with the FRA. But you've got lacrosse coming, um, soccer, I'm, you know, they're busting at the seams at soccer, so they could use money out there to help them try to expand. There's just so many projects that could help the youth, uh, sports. And like I said, I'm not opposed to the lights, but if the county's already gonna foot that bill in the next two years, maybe that's the best choice unless the city is prepared to help all the youth organizations across the city. Uh, I don't think it's fair, a- and I've served on that board as well. I just don't feel that it's fair to steer, if that's all the funding you're doing for youth sports, to steer it to one organization, um, when there's other youth organizations that could definitely use some funding to help them better the youth athletes. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, um, Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Enjoyed talking with you earlier this, uh, this week.
use some funding to help them better the youth athletes. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Enjoyed talking with you earlier this week. I kept seeing numbers and what's this, what's that, and I think it's up to the board. You've got a decision to make as far as funds. We've got 4.3 million in our operating account. You know, we could amend the budget if the board so chooses. I think, I kind of look at this as kind of like a grant. I mean, and a lot of grants we go into, it's 50% split. You know, so I mean, if it's something the board really wants to do, you can look at it one or two ways. You're not paying the 429, the county's covering that. Or you also can look at it as, you know, if we've got time to wait, the county will pay the whole bill. So, you know, it's just, if it's, it's just, from a financial standpoint, I think it's always good to invest in the community, invest in the youth. There's worse things you could spend the money on, but I think it's just up to the board, what you feel in your conscience.
Mayor, Tom, of the 4.3 million in the general fund operating account, how much of that is earmarked currently in the current fiscal year?
There are no community development funds for youth sports in the budget. There's, I believe there's $2,500 per commissioner in the budget this year. That would definitely have to be amended budget.
All right, let me ask it a different way, sorry. Of the 4.3 million, how much of that in our current budget is already allocated anywhere?
We're on the tail end of the budget cycle. I would say, if I was guessing, we've spent 75, 80% of our allocation, and we're looking at probably 20% left. So we're, as far as for the 4.3, we're also in the high side of our revenue cycle with property tax, so we're financially, are you asking me if the 214,000 would put us in a bind?
I guess that would be a secondary question, but really and truly, I was asking if we only have, what is the actual number, since I've only been here a month, what is the actual number of the current fiscal year budget for the total budget for the city?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I can go get them real quick if you've got a minute.
Well, is it 5 million? Is it 10 million? Is it?
I'd say it's between 5 and 6 million.
Between 5 and 6 million. So if it was 5 million, you're saying we've already spent 4 million?
That would be about...
We have 1 million to go, so out of that, we would have 3.3 million left.
Still have substantial revenue coming in.
Still have substantial revenues coming in.
In February, yes.
Okay, so we're beyond solid then.
Pretty good shape.
Solid. If I make a motion, and I know your job is to do what any three of us vote to do, and you just implement it, how would you feel about us partnering with the county on some property we have to put basketball courts and football field and lacrosse fields on property that we already own? And say, what if that took 500,000 to make that happen, and they were going to put 500,000 with it? And I don't mean right now, I'm, next budget year.
I think looking at, I think it's very smart to look at partnering with the county on several of these things. Mr. Hampton and I talked, and even on properties that they already do activities, there's areas on some of those properties where we could expand recreational services. So there's, and then it would keep the maintenance close. I would look at those properties first before I looked at purchasing land or putting it on undeveloped land already. Is that correct? Kind of what we talked about?
You know, I think the first thing you do is you look at your available inventory, and the county's, you know, footprint here is the rec center, is the most notable place as well as the ballpark. The way that you get more use out of the facilities is to go state-of-the-art, you know? You have to start thinking outside the box and looking at long-range use. So I would consider things like pricing out turfing, the old football stadium, as something that would get maximum amounts of play year-round regardless of the weather. The other thing is that if you look at the plat maps of the ball field over here, you know, it's kind of deceiving, but there's a lot of pine back there on the backside of the park that the county, it's part of that property. And, you know, that could be cleared and used because, you know, it's relatively flat in that particular area, it's just heavily wooded. So, you know, that could go in and be cleared and used for outdoor basketball courts and pickleball courts. I don't know if y'all get the, all the conversation about pickleball courts, but I know the staff down here, you know, at the rec center are covered up with, inundated with, you know, we only have three pickleball courts at certain times of the day for the city of Fairview, and I hear about that all the time. And of course, Mayor Anderson's there, you know, back in her little spot back there, but you know how many people are in there playing pickleball every day. So there are some wonderful recreational opportunities that I think could take place on inventory that we already own. You know, we just have to get real creative and figure out the best way to access those areas and, you know, and just kind of think outside the box a little bit. So I do think there are possibilities.
How much land is on the backside of the ball fields?
You know, I'm afraid to even take a guess at it, but the superintendent for Parks and Recreation's Planning and Administration, Phyllis Huffman, who knows where all the bodies are buried in Williamson County, she says that there is considerable space back there to do, you know, quite a few things. But, you know, y'all probably have access to your mapping system, you know, to look at that and pull that up, and you can, if not, you can go to the county's website and look at the topo maps and everything for that particular plat out there.
I have no idea how expensive it is to clear trees, but is that another partnership that if we decided to do that, to put more fields and different sports out there, is that how that works as well?
You know, Tom kind of said it best. If you look at this like, you know, and I don't know how hard y'all go after grants, but the county just hired a former county commissioner named Beth Lathers. She was the county commissioner that represented the Nolanville area, and she is a highly regarded grant writer. So Mayor, County Mayor Anderson recently brought her on board to start seeking out grant money. It's no secret, we've had some meetings with some of the commissioners from the state level about the federal money that's coming in through the state of Tennessee that's being dispersed down to counties and municipalities. And we feel like, that's the reason why we brought this grant writer on board, we feel like that there is, there are a lot of opportunities to get grant funding. But I think that the way that the county has always operated is that, once again, if a municipality feels like there is a need to serve their constituents and the residents in their community for recreational needs, if they identify something and they approach Williamson County to partner on that, there has never been a situation where County Mayor Anderson has declined that partnership. Even as much as a $5.5 million-esque from the city of Brentwood, you know, he is inclined to do that because we're sharing the cost, we're not duplicating services. It's just smart government. And I'll say this, when you think of the cost recovery on some things like that, there's not a lot of it there for outdoor recreation, but it's just the right thing to do. All across this country, there are ballparks, you know, and we have an opportunity where we've got some extra land there, you know, we can get a cost to see what it would cost or take to clear it and look at opportunities, create like a site master plan, you know, for an area. I've got people that we have on retainer that, you know, I could even like absorb the cost for that. I wouldn't even charge that back to the city, you know, to take a look at these types of projects. I'll absorb the cost on establishing and creating budgets. I don't mind doing that at all. And, you know, and then put it back to you to whether or not you have an appetite to try to, you know, see if we can kick that can down the road a little bit. But I absolutely believe that there are some wonderful opportunities ahead of us, and if, you know, if we just want to roll up our sleeves and try to get it done.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. On, say, a football practice facility with a football field, how many acres would you be looking at for, say, like the Fairview Titans?
So, you know, I'll be honest with you. I think that one of the things that, and this is another partnership that took place in Brentwood between a rec association. You know, Mr. Crutcher here, he mentioned just a minute ago about the nice fund balance that the rec association has. Well, another rec association in Brentwood, they have a nice fund balance as well, and it's the Brentwood Ball Club, used to be the civitan baseball, softball organization. But they approached the city of Brentwood, and they did something really innovative. They turfed the baseball fields. And in doing so, the lighting is already there, the fencing is already there, and they turfed those fields, and so when it's non-baseball and softball seasons, then Brentwood Blaze, which is a football organization, and some of the lacrosse teams can get out there and play on those turfed baseball fields. And when you think about, and they look great because the infield's are done in brown turf and the outfield's are done in green turf. Vanderbilt University plays high-level baseball on a completely turfed field with the exception of the pitching mounds and where the bases are. But those are the types of things that you do to, once again, use the inventory that you have, make these facilities playable year-round. If we explored options like that at the ballpark with a state-of-the-art lighting system, that park can be used rain or shine, and you'll be surprised how much use you can get out of that. Also, you know, there's potential with maybe partnering with the Lions Club, you know, about the land that they have there in front of their facility as well. You know, I think at some point in time, it'd be worth a conversation with them to see what their plans are for that property and see if there could be an additional partnership. The more people you bring in, you know, the better the party is.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. But to answer your question, I'm sorry, about how much space do you need for a multipurpose field, you almost need about two acres.
What about seven?
Seven would be several fields.
We've got seven acres, and all we do is keep it bush hogged.
You know, what's the topography like?
Pretty good.
Yeah.
It's not bad at all.
You know, where you...
Deer Ridge, right at the county line, I mean, right at the city-county line.
Yeah, you know...
Where the storage building is, sir.
One of the things you have to take in consideration there is owning the property is huge, but developing the infrastructure is expensive.
Right, yeah.
You know, parking lots, restrooms, so on and so forth. That's what really drives the cost up. That infrastructure is actually more than the playing surfaces by a long shot.
I can imagine so.
Yes, sir.
But we do have seven acres, and it's...
Where he's talking, it's literally 1,000 yards from the rec center.
It'd be worth looking into.
I come close several years ago, meeting with the waste management part of the county about them taking that project, I mean, that property, and y'all taking the backside of the convenience center to enlarge the, actually, I think at the time, we were talking of an indoor swimming pool.
I remember that.
You remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now, down here on the right.
That acreage is still there, and it's just, I think it's just a thing that the city has to expend money on, bush hogging and cutting, you know, put mowers and that type of thing. And there's a storage building there that I don't, I think it's just got junk in it, best I remember. Is anything drastic there, Tom, that's really worth anything in that storage building out there? I don't think so.
You know, and I do intend, at some point here in the next few months, to ask myself back so that I can give you the report from the master plan. And so, you know, while I'm standing here, I'll just let you know that we're about to get that wrapped up. And if you'll remember, we had a Fairview focus group meeting that night. And so I want to come back and share the findings from this community, from that event, as well as the residents of Fairview that took the online survey. And there's some very interesting, and the feedback on that was incredible. And so your constituents did actually make a lot of noise about how they felt about that master plan and the possibilities for recreation in Fairview. And I'm telling you, it's very significant. I think you probably already know that, but, you know, it does add to the quality of life. It's not cheap, but it certainly is something that, it's multi-generational, and I think it's a good investment.
Mr. Hampton, I've gotten some information that the Fairview Ballpark property is 30.28 acres, and I would guess that no more than 15 of it is probably being used.
There you go.
If you had two acres per field, and that's eight acres, and if you had seven acres for the parking lot, and then in between the fields and the concession stand, I mean, that leaves another 15 acres possibly. So there very well could be a substantial land that's in play there.
And we have access to foresters that could actually go in there and see if there are any harvestable trees in there, any hardwoods. If so, you could probably get the clearing paid for just by the harvesting of some of that timber if it's harvestable. But we could, you know, we've got resources to explore those options. Listen, we can get really creative about trying to keep the cost down, and, you know, I'll pull every trick that I've got out of the bag to, you know, try to make these things happen at a price tag that'll make it, you know, easier to make decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Crutcher, did you have something else to say?
Just real quick, I was going to say, I've been involved in numerous grants, having sat on that board, and every grant that I've been involved with, usually, we get some money, and then we're responsible for taking care of it after it's done. Look at the median and the condition it's in, look at the sidewalks, some of the conditions they're in that were all grant-funded. This is a grant where we get some money and they take care of it. It sounds like a really good partnership to me and one of the best types of grants that we could hope for.
Any other discussion on this? Any other discussion on this?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if there's no more discussion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the kids of our community to approve this project, but in that motion, to immediately form a committee of citizens, rec board members, members of our board, members of the county government, uh, to form that committee to start and find for upgrades for football, basketball and lacrosse and any other sports, uh, entities, uh, that the county sees as in our near future.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, a, a tremendous, um, discussion tonight, a tremendous speech. I, I want the best facilities in Fairview. I think I'm trying to, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is two nights ago, we had a parks master plan, our, our initial kind of kickoff, um, with our citizen engagement. And part of that parks master plan is going to be citizen feedback about projects, parks, funding and future things for our community, including Williamson County partnerships and things. And so I, it's hard for me to wrap my hand around moving or approving two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars two nights after we just kicked that off without some of the feedback and discussion. And there's so many tremendous things that we need for capital improvements as far as the zoning ordinance that we just recently discussed, a major thoroughfare plan. There's so many things that we need to continue on that side that I'd rather see a, a bigger scheme or a budget or a plan before I just commit to, to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes three, one.
Mayor, just, just a point order, the resolution had one fifty-seven. I don't know if you want to visit that just to make sure that there's, it clarifies. If that was your intent or...
Mr. Carter, could you, um, speak to that, please?
The amount needs to be two fourteen, seven sixty-one. That's what it needs to be? So we need to have a motion to reconsider, which is a separate motion, then we can address the item again.
Move to reconsider.
It's a majority, so it needs to be seconded in a majority. Since we're doing it at the meeting, if it was a separate meeting, it'd have to be two thirds, but since we're addressing it here at the meeting, it just needs to be a majority vote on the motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
No, I think it'd be appropriate to reconsider the item and make the motion to correct the resolution of...
I will, I will entertain the exact same motion, but changing our resolution to the new county figure.
Second.
Do we need to state the figure for the record?
I think that would be good. Is it two fourteen, seven?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, so...
That's our share of the total, four twenty-nine, five twenty-two.
And that's in, that's the, the resolution that's before you tonight that you're voting on, correct? And it's the same, same, essentially the same resolution that you made with the formation of the committee and, uh, the amount being the amended amount. Okay.
Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Motion passes three to one.
Item number five, citizens' comments. Thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Just so we're clear, Ms. Jones, I, I would like that on the next agenda to form that committee, please.
First citizen comment is Ms. Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Thank you so much. I'm Tiffany Wilson Mobley at seventy-three oh three Cox Run Court in Fairview. Um, I want to ask a question really quickly. I have, well, let me get into what I'm going to say and then you can let me know what I should do. Um, this is regarding new business D to confirm the appointment of two citizens' members, two citizen members to the Parks and Landscape Board. I have folks who were not able to come tonight that wanted to make sure that they had their comments read. One is Richard Branch, lives in Fairview, and he said, "I can't be there tonight, but I fully support Elmer being on this board."
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. Mr. Dotaro, could you please close the door? Mr. Dotaro, could you please close the doors? Thank you, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you very much. Um, Gloria Ebarb, who lives on Shayla Court, she wrote, "This is a recommendation to accept Elmer Mobley's application to the Parks and Landscaping Advisory Board. Elmer would make a great addition to the board. He is dedicated to Fairview and cares deeply about the people and the land here. I believe he would assist in a positive and fair manner to make sure Fairview Parks and the community of Fairview remains a beacon for all of us to enjoy. I value his insight and his work ethic. I do hope he has the opportunity to show it." Chandler Miniet from the Castleberry subdivision, she wrote, "I support Elmer Mobley's appointment to the Parks and Landscaping Advisory Board. His advocacy for our green spaces and conservation are a much-needed voice in our city's plan for the future. Thoughtful development while enhancing the rich beauty of our town is at the top of mind with Elmer, and I fully support his nomination." Um, we have Dr. Terry Wilson, who's a professor emeritus at Western Kentucky University, and he wrote, "My fifty-year career in the fields of outdoor and environmental education has given me a distinct appreciation for having competent local leadership in managing parks and recreation facilities. Mr. Elmer Mobley provides a unique and powerful perspective for Fairview in this regard." And I have someone who's here, she was not able to get here before to sign up, but she's been here through this discussion. And I have hers, I can read or she could come up to read. It's up to you.
I would like to hear from her.
Okay, thank you. Another neighbor said, "People who serve on the board are committed to this community. Elmer is a type of individual that makes the community what it is, working and serving in your neighborhood to help others and protect the environment, so future generations can enjoy Fairview as priceless. Would be lucky to get a guy like Elmer." For my children, they wanted to write also, they wrote, "I think you should appoint Elmer Mobley because he is a natural leader. He is very good at receiving input from those he is working with in order to make an informed decision. He is one of the most passionate but level-headed people in the workplace, and he will be an incredible asset to this board." And they said, "And he's also a kickbooty dad that rocks at everything." They want to make sure you heard that. One is at Swanee and one is here. Um, and one more, "I think Elmer should be appointed to this board because he loves this community. He is passionate about protecting the parks and preserving the environment. His commitment to these concerns and his personal integrity represent the qualities needed for a member of this board." I'm probably out of time. I would love to, um, support my husband and I just think he's amazing, but I will let those words go because if I talk about him, I'll probably cry because he's so incredible to me. So I'll ask the other lady to come forward if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Do we have any others?
We do. One more, Rosalie Mobley.
Is, is that the last one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, that's fine.
Hello, my name is Ashley Perry and I'm at seventy-one oh five Grammar Drive. Um, Elmer Mobley has proven to be a loyal advocate of the Fairview community. He believes in responsible growth to preserve what makes Fairview special. Uh, last week or so, I was at the WCS Strategic Planning Committee and, and Mr. Golden commented that Fairview has a sense of community unlike any other, um, city in the county. Uh, and, and I think that that's really special to us. Um, and I believe that responsible growth can preserve that. Fairview has the potential to be the best that Williamson County has to offer. I truly believe that. And, and just take a second to, to think about that. The best that Williamson County has to offer. And, uh, it's a tall order, but with proper planning to protect that sense of community, to manage growth and integrate the natural beauty of our area, um, you and our, our citizens can make that happen. And I, I've known Elmer for a long time and I, I truly believe with his calm logic that he would be a valuable asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, public announcements, awards and recognitions. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, board. Got my, my notes all jumbled up here. Well, I do know that I have lost my notes. Um, hold on.
Rachel, do you have a copy?
I do want to wish the Fairview High School basketball team good luck tonight. I know, uh...
They lost.
Huh? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, oh. Um, I don't, my, my announcements are somewhere. I think, uh, where we have, um, Richard Ross is taking applications for the, uh, buoy, uh, for the July fourth event for vendors, as well as, um, I believe there's Arts and Crafts Fair coming up that he's taking, um, applications for. Um, as of right now, that's all that's coming to mind, but thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, staff comments and monthly reports. Item seven A, planning report. Mr. Blackburn?
Mayor, board, um, so tonight I have a list of things that, you know, kind of what we've got going on in planning and engineering. Uh, I'll start with the planning commission agenda. Uh, that one for next Tuesday, the fourteenth, or the fourteenth, sorry. Um, I believe that may have been put in your packet, but if not, I can go through any of those items that are needed. We have a master development plan, a site development plan, final plat, an annexation and a rezoning on, on the agenda for planning commission. Um, the next item is the bonds and site development agreements. One of the things that we've needed to take a look at for some time is a look at our site development agreements as they, as they pertain to, uh, projects that are going on in the city. Uh, it's something that I took on with city attorney and we worked together to come up with a better method that cleans up a lot of the, um, the language in that. There's a couple of those on tonight's agenda. Uh, the first one is the VSAT, which is a satellite gateway over next to Meeting Place Church. Uh, that resolution is a site development agreement that was under, under works before this, um, new site development agreement. So it looked a little bit different, um, but that one is the, is the fifteen dash twenty-three. Then eleven dash twenty-three, the reserves on Chester, uh, sections one and two, that one is a update to that site development agreement. It reflects that. So from now on, uh, whenever these site development agreements come through, they'll come to this board to be voted on, um, to provide authority for the mayor to sign those. So, um, it cleans up all of that. It puts it in one, you know, one location where all these get approved. Um, one other item on bonds, Sweet Fire Springs Phase Two, uh, the bond is to be released in May of twenty twenty-three. That, those roadway improvements and infrastructure have been inspected, um, as builds have been provided and staff has inspected those. So that, that bond will be released in May. It's been a year since that maintenance bond was in place and that terminates in May. Um, under projects, we have urban growth boundary. The county update of that is in progress. More info to come on that within the next few months. I know Mike, I had a meeting this week, um, talking about that, uh, with the county and, you know, just looking at the next steps and where, where we fit into that urban growth boundary discussion. Um, Highway ninety-six property is one that we've talked about quite a bit. It's over on Northwest Highway, uh, the location of our second fire station that we're, you know, the future home of that. Uh, that contract has been signed. The closing is, should be done within the next few weeks. Um, that will also serve to realign Northwest Highway to provide a safer, you know, alignment of that intersection with ninety-six. So, um, pretty good sized project there. Um, in the last month, we've issued a total of fifteen residential building permits. Any questions?
The surveying, um, on Northwest, did you say that's going to happen next week?
Um, well, the surveying on that, that property, the ninety-six property, that's the one, it's, um, a ten, two five acre parcels. Those have been surveyed already. That one will go to, um, closing, I guess, within the next couple of weeks, probably. Um, I know the escrow money's been put into that and that's, that's underway, so...
But the surveying, where the road is going to be straightened on Northwest Highway?
That hasn't, that part hasn't started yet, but the locate, the alignment's been selected for this piece. The rest of Northwest will come through with, um, a survey that's being scoped right now.
Okay, so we, we don't have a timeline on that yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Are you familiar with what's being talked about with the, um, in respect to the urban growth boundary as far as, can you talk about that a little bit?
I know that there's a discussion right now of, um, the urban growth boundary and how that, you know, how that could change pretty soon with, with respect to the way cities, you know, accept that. I know that one of the things, uh, they had discussed is, is, um, allowing cities to annex areas that may not be contiguous. I know that's part of it. I know that's under discussion. I don't know where, if that's going to go forward or not. I just have heard that that was up for discussion, so...
Thank you. Any questions? Item seven B, public works report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works has been busy, especially with all the, the stormy weather we've been having, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. Um, they've been busy replacing stop signs, uh, with all the weather. They've, um, cleaned out, uh, fifty driveway drains and driveway culverts, um, uh, spent a lot of time, uh, cleaning up, uh, limbs and debris. They've also been keeping the roads clean, picking up thirty-eight bags of trash, uh, during the month of, um, February. Uh, they cleared their leaf service routes, they patched, uh, potholes... They patched potholes, and pretty much have just stayed busy. They're also doing a, doing a real good job. We're kind of experimenting with them doing some maintenance on some of the vehicles, and they've been doing some tire changing and some oil changing and well, as well, and it is, it is, it is a little less inexpensive. We're still going back and forth if that's the way we want to go, but during the winter months, it's, there's a little, there's, has been a little bit of time to experiment. As far as Public Works, are there any questions on that?
I was wondering, as far as the medians are concerned, where the planting was done from the, I guess, from where Highway 96 meets 100 down, would Public Works be able to do some maintenance on those as far as removal of dead plants and trees? Is that something that they could do to kind of speed that along, plus save us a little money?
Yes, definitely. And we're also looking at the Public Works possibly taking over maintenance of those areas, mowing, and also cleaning out dead shrubbery if there is any. There's still some plants that are, that are doing okay, but.
I think they need to be trimmed up, and.
Definitely.
There's a random tree that's kind of grown up that needs to be removed, and I think if, if our Public Works can do that, then, you know, we could save quite a bit on hiring someone to do it. I think it's not enough, you know, a long-term maintenance, you know, would be good, but also I think just getting it cleaned up is something that we could do pretty, you know, pretty easily.
Most definitely.
Any questions?
I have a question, Mayor. Tom, what is the current protocol when a citizen calls in with a safety issue such as a road flooding due to culverts being clogged up? And the reason I'm asking this is because the citizen said they called into the Street Public Works Department, and they were told that they could not go out and perform anything without conferring with the Codes Department, which I find ludicrous.
I've not heard that. Without knowing the situation or who it was, normally I would, I would say call the Police Department and let the information go out from there. You know, anytime there's a danger, dangerous intersection, we need to have, first, probably first call would be public safety. Then they can call our Public, Public Works Director, or whoever needs to be called to give, get anything done, but they'll be the ones that could divert traffic and make sure that people are safe.
But between Public Works and the Police Department, there's no involvement from the Codes Department whatsoever?
No.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, and maybe, you may need to speak with Public Works tomorrow to let them know that, because evidently they're not under that assumption.
Okay, I would be more than willing to look at that situation closer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about Public Works? Item number 7C, Finance Report. Mr. Darty.
Yes, ma'am. The first line is operating. I'm just hitting this very fast, and again, hopefully we'll have staff up and running first of April, and we can get caught up, being able to deliver better reports to not just you, but also to us. But these are all of our account balances. I always like to point out that the one with the last four digits, 2035GF Capital, I just, that's the ARP money. And then that's pretty much self-explanatory as far as where we are dollar-wise.
Any questions from the Board about Finance? Item 7D, City Manager Report. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Tuesday, we had open house meetings for the Park Master Plan, which I want to just let the public know that, that public input is still being taken through March 14th, and even though they missed the meeting, they can do an online survey. We've put it up on the website, or they can go to fairviewparksplan.com and fill out the survey and give their input. They can also, I don't have her email right in front of me, but if you go to fairviewparksplan.com, I believe her email is on the website. You can email her any input. We've been working extremely hard on Personnel Policy Handbook, and we're in the final stages of completion. I've got one small thing to iron out, and then it's going to go to, go to Chuck for review, and then I'm going to send it to Mr. Carter for review, and then I'll get y'all copies and let y'all look over it for a week or two, and then we'll get it on the agenda. The Municipal Code Review is in the final stages of review. We're pretty close. I've got Chuck coming in, going to sit down with Rachel and myself, and we're going to try to iron out some things. Mr. Carter has been, been looking at some things as well. So we're getting close to that. There'll be something else that'll be coming to you guys. I wanted to give a congratulations to the Police Department. They were approved for Governor Lee's new violent crime intervention and investigation grant of 99,000, excuse me, $786 to be spent on equipment for investigative personnel. If you haven't been on the website lately, Greg Roble with Insurco has completed a website refresh for our site. We are pleased with the new format appearance and feel it enhances the ease of navigation. He will begin a refresh of the Park Web, Website as soon as everything greens up, and we can get him updated pictures. Kevin already talked about the, the purchase out on Highway 100, I mean Highway 96 and Northwest Highway. I expect to close on that deal in days, so that's, that is real close. That's about all for my City Manager Report. Any questions? Be willing to answer.
The Municipal Code, when did you say that that should be complete?
We're in final stages. I would say our goal, and Rachel may help me here, but I think, I think we'd like to have everything finished and back to MTS to implement all of our suggestions within two to three weeks, and then probably coming to you guys as soon, just as soon as they get it back to us. And then I'd say maybe we can have a raver vote in four to five weeks, maybe.
So it will be coming to us in a digital copy and then a hard copy made available here at City Hall?
Yes, and it'll be, it'll be in, it'll be in ordinance form. It'll be, well, you'll have to, it'll be, the code will be, it'll be like an ordinance, and you just vote right now like any other ordinance. Did that give you more questions than answers?
Well, I was kind of thinking, you know, the way I've done things in the past when I was in the architectural engineering field is we would have something, and then when something changed or was new, it was kind of highlighted, so you would know where you came from and where you are now. So is there anything like that, or is it, you know, so we'll know?
I will let you. I will let you have the old copy, and you can see there's, there's tons of stuff in there. It's just so outdated. Just, I'll, I'll give you the old copy, and you can take a look at it.
Yeah, it's such a large document. I was just thinking, well, if we could, you know, see, yes.
There's a checklist that's been put together by MTS that details all the changes. Several of the changes have already been accepted. I was given this checklist, and I have a number of comments. On one of the matters, I need to speak with Judge Crutcher, and we've, we've both been busy and missing each other in the office, but that conversation will happen soon. There's some other items I need to discuss with MTS because I, I don't understand their suggestion frankly, and want to understand it before I say yes or no. But I think Mr. Darty's correct. We're, we're pretty close. I'd say two or three weeks to allow those to happen. MTS will correlate those changes and get it back to you. I think that checklist is, is probably would be the most helpful because it will tell you what, what changes MTS suggested and what staff did with them.
It's, it's good for us to be familiar with all of that. It's just, it would be nice with it coming to a vote if we had a checklist where we know what's been changed and what stayed the same, so that we're not having to read 800 pages just for the vote if things.
I'll be sure to provide a copy of their checklist and what we, what we changed.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Item number eight, Consent Agenda. Item 8A, Minutes from Board of Commissioner Meeting, February 16, 2023.
Moved to approve, Mayor.
Any discussion? Hall Johnson, would you call the roll, please, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. As we discussed, Item 9, Old Business Will Be Deferred. Item 10, New Business, Item, yes.
To make a motion to defer for 30 days, or however long you want to defer it for, needs to be second and voted on to defer it. I don't think anyone can unilaterally just take it off the agenda now that it appears on the agenda.
Oh, okay. I was thinking that we, we voted on that.
I think the, the last meeting, I think it was deferred 30 days, which would have been tonight, so I think it needs to be deferred again, another 30 days, it sounds like. Is that right?
Does it, does it make a difference, Mr. Carter, that it's a, an issue being put on by city staff? It's not a, it's not a agenda item that we are actually placing on the agenda, so are they going to? If we did it 30 days ago, it's only been 14 days since our last meeting, so 30 days would really be the next, the next meeting we have.
I think it would be appropriate to make a motion to, to put it to the next meeting if, so it's 30 days. The motion at the last meeting was, was it how long, 30 days?
March 2nd meeting.
The March 2nd meeting? And so when do we want to defer it to?
And I have no problem deferring it again and doing exactly what you're saying, but if city staff doesn't have it ready for us, I don't want to just keep deferring it. I'd like to defer it until they're ready to bring it back to us.
Well, that would involve tabling it, and then it takes two-thirds vote to remove it from the table, so it, it may, may provide more convenience to the city just to defer it again for 30 days and, and have it reappear on the agenda if it's not ready at that time.
I'll make a motion to.
Hold on, hold on. Kevin, could you weigh in on when you think this would be ready?
I haven't been part of that, that piece. That's a planning piece, but, I mean, I would think 30 days would be reasonable.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for Tom, Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Mayor, if, if Micah was asking for this to be put on the agenda, and Micah's not here tonight, when, when did you know Micah wasn't going to be here?
He had let me know, I think some, one day last week, he was, he had training, and it may have been even the week before that, so that, anyway. I had talked with the Mayor earlier, and said, "We're, we're not going to be able to present the, this item." And so however y'all want to do it, I would recommend, I would probably feel more comfortable, maybe not the next meeting, but the next, maybe the second meeting in, or the first meeting in, in April. We probably can get it done before, at the next meeting, but just to be safe.
Did, did Micah know at the last meeting, when we deferred it, at the time, he had training and wouldn't be here tonight?
I can't answer that.
Can you get us an answer to that, and then when the city booked the training that he's currently at tonight? I'd like that at the next meeting, please.
We did receive an email a week ago saying that Micah wouldn't be here tonight, and that this item would probably be deferred, so we did get a heads up.
No, no, I, I realize that part, but I would like to know if between the last meeting that we held, was the training booked, is what I'm asking? Or was it booked previous to us deferring it to tonight's meeting? So the one week doesn't matter, that Brandon's speaking of, if it was done prior to the last meeting, we should have already known that, and if it was done in the week in between there, I'd like to know that as well, because that would have still been out prior, we would have known that prior to it being put on the agenda. Still wouldn't have mattered because we had it deferred to tonight's meeting. I just want to know that, just to know.
If we choose to defer that to the first meeting in April, that would be April 6th.
So moved.
That would be my recommendation, if you're, if the Board wants to defer it. Just move to defer or postpone until April 6th.
So do we have a motion to defer it to April 6th meeting?
I do.
Okay. Do we have a second? Johnson, Hall, Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Item number 10, New Business, Item A. Resolution 07-23, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Confirming the Appointment of One Board of Commissioner Member to the Planning
Mayor, I'd like to see Brandon Butler remain on the Planning Commission.
Mr. Carter, do we have to vote on that, and then if someone else wanted to make another recommendation, do that after, or do we do it all simultaneously?
Well, I think the motions, I think we need to vote on his motion, so he's made a motion to appoint Butler, so there would have to be a second, and then there should be a vote, and if for some reason it fails, and there wants to be another motion, then there can be another motion, and we can continue until you're tired of it, or someone gets approved.
We have a motion for Vice Mayor Butler. Do we have a second?
There's not a second. It would fail for a lack of second, and then you should entertain another motion.
So the motion fails. I make a motion for Commissioner Johnson to be appointed to the Planning Commission? So that motion fails as well? So I'm going to make a motion to defer this item until we have a full Board of Five, and I'm going to recommend that the seat remain vacant on the Planning Commission until we have a vote for a new Planning Commission member to the Board, or to the, a Board of Commissioner member to the Planning Commission.
I, I think if I understand the process in Fairview correctly, that you have this election once a year for the BOC to appoint their members to the Planning Commission, then I think the seat does remain empty until it's filled. And actually, I think that's, that expired, that appointment expired as of December 31. And I realize Mr. Butler appeared at the last Planning Commission meeting, and I don't think I was aware of the issue at, at that point, but I would, my, my legal recommendation But I would, my, my legal recommendation is that the seat remains empty until it gets filled by the BOC. So you would have essentially eight people at the Planning Commission with one seat unfilled. So if you made a motion to defer, are you making a motion to defer until April, April meeting?
It would be the April 6th meeting, when Commissioner Fisher Street is back.
All right, so that's the motion, and there would need to be a second, and then debate and real call.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero.
Defer until the April meeting.
To the April 6th meeting. Item 10B, Resolution 08-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, appointing city commissioners to city committees for the purpose of designating areas of interest and reporting to the Board of Commissioner members. Mr. Doherty, were you wanting to speak on that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, in looking at the, the resolution that formed this committee back in December 2020, it says, "A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, appointing city commissioners to city committees for the purpose of designating areas of interest and reporting to the Board of Commissioners." If you go down through all the wherayses, there's not a lot there either. You know, I, I don't, I'm, if y'all find a reason, a, a purpose to meet separately and bring reports to the Board, that, that's, that's fine, but I, I, I feel like it's going to cause some problems functionally, as well as just duplicating work. I feel like if we, if we do that, there's going to be a commissioner and the mayor, so then it's going to have to be advertised, and we're going to have to have it probably at night, and it's going to fill up the calendar. It's going to do work that we, we handle in work sessions and, and vote on at the BOC. I, I don't, I mean, I may be missing something that, that I don't understand really what these committees do, but I hope everybody here knows that my door is always open, and I think most of the staffs are, too, and we, we're an open book. And I don't know, I, I just, if I could see the benefit, I, I just, I'm having, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what these committees, how they're really going to help us function. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, could you?
I have questions, too, but Mr. Carter can go first.
Yes.
Oh.
No, I, I just, I just, I would just like you, you to maybe speak about that as well.
I wanted to speak about past history and ask Tom, when I left in 2016, all these committees were still active, at what point, since you've been here, did they stop? And who stopped them?
I'm not sure.
Did the board dissolve them, or did the city manager just arbitrarily get rid of them? Because you heard Commissioner Jones speak about going back to the Budget Committee to get this appropriation to the County Commission, because that's how government works. The boards meet together, work things out, and then it comes to the commission for the final vote. I don't understand why we wouldn't be doing these. When I gave the qualifications of me seeking this seat to be appointed that night, I spoke about me being on every one of these committees for 16 years. And yes, they're at night, and yes, they're open to the public, and yes, you have to advertise for them, but everything that gets done up here, the citizens know about it because it's not taken care of in somebody's office, and you just come up here and vote on it, the people know what's going on.
Correct. I, I believe, I didn't, I didn't, in no way wanted to say we were, I was trying to get away from that and keep everything in the open. The way they were set up, I don't know, I don't know how they got stopped, I don't know exactly when it happened. All I know is this one started them back in 2020. I know, as far as the, we didn't have a budget committee, there was a finance committee, it was not open to the public, it was rarely attended, the commissioner rarely came on finance committee. I don't know, I think some of the other committees may have functioned better, but I don't know of any reporting, I never heard of any reporting, I never saw any collaboration whatsoever, so that's just my, been my experience.
Mayor?
Um,
I sent you guys a note, the resolution mentions the mayor being a part of the committees, and in my experience, the mayor was not present in the committee, I was part of the Planning Committee for the last two years. I don't recall committee meetings prior, when I was elected in 2020, we started that 2020, myself started on the Planning, Commissioner Dawson was on Public Safety, Police and Fire, Commissioner Anderson or Mayor Anderson was on Public Works, Parks. And so there was a committee meeting with that staff, and I think it just served as, we hardly talked about agenda items, we talked more about the inner workings, what was happening within the department, and it kind of gave that, that department a voice, or liaison back to the board to help, you know, speak on things that are happening, or if they asked for something or want to discuss something, kind of be there for them, so. That was my experience, it was never two commissioners attending. And I think that's where it kind of convolutes it a little bit, does, does it end the tendency of it being act, and so it was always just one commissioner and staff reviewing different things, so.
Mr. Carter, how do you feel about that?
That's a, that's a open, open sort of question, that, you would not be good at cross-examination, Mayor. Lobbing a question like that, I could answer that in kind of way. I, I think the point of the matter is, these.
That's why we have you.
These are, these are committee meetings, and whether there's one commissioner attending or multiple commissioners, they're, they're really to inform the public, and the public should be invited, and they should be advertised, and they should be held in a public sort of way, if you want the public to trust what the government's doing. That being said, if, if the intent is only to have one commissioner with staff, then legally, it's not, it doesn't constitute a, an open meeting, it wouldn't be a sunshine violation. I don't think that's the best practice, because I don't think that's how committees are supposed to function. Now, if you're talking about committee meetings where there's one Board of Commissioner assigned to each of these committees, but the other commissioners want to come and participate, or the mayor wants to come and participate, then I think by, by law and by necessity, it's an open meeting, it needs to be advertised. Minutes need to be kept, there needs to be an agenda, it needs to be held in a public place. I suspect, like lots of cities, what happened is that this started with all good intentions in 2016, or whenever it started, or longer, from what Commissioner Johnson is saying, it, it probably hit a snag during COVID because people weren't, weren't permitted, or it wasn't healthy to meet together, and at some point, it, it kind of petered out or became what it is now. And so the committees are different than commissions, committees are, are kind of ad hoc, and they can come and go depending on the needs of the city. And so if the, if the vote of the majority here, the will of the Board is to have these committees, they, they probably need to be public, whether they legally need to be public or not. And, because I just think that's the way committees and government are supposed to work. And certainly, if you have two or more members or commissioners attending, then they, they must be public. But whether you need the committees or not, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't have an opinion about that.
The whole time I served, things getting to the agenda came through committees. If it failed in committee, it didn't likely get to the full Board for a vote. Now, it just seems, I've only been here a little over a month, it just seems like it's willy-nilly, anything just gets put on the agenda, nobody's seen it, I may not have knowledge of it, the other three Board members may not have knowledge of it, they may have full knowledge of it, I don't know, but I can't tell you another government around here that doesn't work with committees. The county, everything goes through a committee, the state, everything goes through, through a committee, City of Franklin, it goes through committees, so.
I think committees are a common way for where the, the commissioners, and maybe you guys can do it, but other, other cities haven't figured it out, no one can be an expert at everything, so the idea is that the committee member becomes an expert in, in that, and they may take an ad hoc vote about whether it's recommended or not, and then that, and then that commissioner can speak as to that item, and have some level of expertise that the other commissioners won't necessarily have. So, for example, if, if Johnson is on the Parks and Rec Committee, or, or Transportation Committee, or whatever committees we've constituted, then, then he essentially would be, could talk about what happened at the committee meeting, and then talk about what the recommendation was from the committee. That doesn't, that doesn't beholden the, the Board of Commissioners to, to agree with the committee, they can disagree with the committee. And that's fine, too, that happens, but I think Commissioner Johnson's correct that having committees where necessary i- is common. I just don't know what committees are necessary in Fairview, and these committees may be necessary, maybe there's other committees that are necessary, maybe only two of these four committees are necessary, I, I don't know. But that is for the, that's the will of the BOC to decide.
We have four committees, and the mayor basically floats, if, if I wanted to. It really makes no difference to me how prior mayors did it, I want to be involved in everything. So if there's a meeting of a committee, I want to be involved. So if we're doing that, then we'll just have to advertise and have it.
Yeah, if that's the case, that they're necessarily public meetings, they need to be advertised, there needs to be an agenda put together for that meeting, and there needs to be minutes recorded. Either the meeting needs to be recorded, or there needs to be a secretary appointed on the committee to, to keep minutes. Those minutes probably should be part of the committee report that comes before you all, so you can look at them.
I agree, a, a budget committee to, to review a random $200,000 expense would have been good for tonight's agenda. So I would agree with, with committees in trying to create some.
It's a finance committee is one.
Well, that example, that probably would have saved a lot of debate tonight over it, because you would, they would have been able to, that committee would have been able to make a recommendation, and would have some of the facts and figures that you were struggling to put together on the fly. And, and so if committees are used properly, it can make your meeting go much faster. If they're used improperly, it can, it can cause all sorts of other problems, but if we do it the correct way, then I think it would be very helpful. It, it sounds to me like it had become dysfunctional, maybe because of COVID, and then the change in leadership and administration with the change in the city manager. Mr. Doherty inheriting something maybe that, that had become dysfunctional. We just need to make it functional again, if that's the will of the Board.
And who appoint, I, I've read, but I need to be corrected if I'm wrong, that the, the mayor appoints the commissioners to the committees.
Well, I'm not sure how these committees were, I'm not sure what the underlying legislation was to create the committees, it was by probably city ordinance, so that may, that may say, Mr. Doherty may know how that's supposed to work. He does not, let's see. Well, it looks to me like this legislation, which is Resolution Number 32 hyphen 20 passed on December 14th, 2020, says that the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners desires to appoint its members to internal city committees, and hereby appoints its members to these committees as follows. And, and so at least in December 2020, Dawson was appointed to the Public Safety Committee, Anderson was appointed to the Public Works Committee, Butler was appointed to Planning and Zoning, and Lucas was appointed to Finance Committee. That was an act of the Board of Commissioners, not just the mayor himself or herself at that time. So it looks, it looks like what's been done in the past is that the BOC has made those appointments. I can't tell from this, you know, who made the motion, obviously. And it says the mayor and one commissioner would be assigned to each committee, so the mayor is a de facto member of every committee. I think that's in line with what the mayor was saying. So it looks to me like the BOC, BOC would appoint the yourselves to the committee. Yeah, with a nomination and a second, and approval.
Were these monthly meetings or quarterly meetings, does it say there?
It doesn't say.
They've always been as needed up until 2016, I don't know what 2020's resolutions calls for.
It doesn't say. It just creates the committees and assigns members to the committees.
Mayor, maybe we have a workshop to discuss committees or, that we, that could be beneficial, we have Parks and Landscape Board already, maybe that serves as Public Works or Parks, and maybe do a budget committee, or maybe we have a workshop to discuss, different ideas?
We are, we have on the agenda to appoint a commissioner to the Parks and Landscape Board, I think that's totally separate from the committees.
No, that's what I'm saying, I think that maybe that group could serve as the Parks Committee or whatever. That's, that's what the workshop would be, to have that discussion.
Mayor, could I ask a question about the four committees on this resolution?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler, would you accept going to Planning, Zoning, and the Engineering Committee if you were nominated for that?
Mayor, I think, well, the way it's written right now, that would, well, the way it's written right now would be as part of the Planning Commission. I think whoever serves on the Planning Commission would be best to be part of that committee.
It might be best, but not absolute.
I don't know of anything that would require that person to be the same, although it would make, it, it has some logical sense attached to it, certainly.
That's right, just the resolution right now in front of us spoke to that, that's the only reason I mentioned that, but that's why I think a workshop would be good to have those discussions.
So in not accepting that tonight, does that mean you don't want to be on the Planning Commission anymore?
No, sir, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, we didn't, we didn't find a resolution on that, and so the way this resolution reads in front of us, appointment of that includes as a member of the Planning Commission, so.
I think, Commissioner Butler, I don't mean to interrupt, but you're talking about the fourth whereas, where the city commissioner appointed the city's Planning Commission as the BOC member, of the Planning Commissioner will be the commissioner assigned to the Planning, Zoning, and Engineering Committee, and that's the, the concern there with.
Yes, sir.
At least how this resolution is written.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll, I'll second his motion for a workshop.
So do we need to make a motion to defer this to a workshop?
I think if there's consensus among the Board that there should be a workshop, then it would make sense to defer the matter for so many days until after workshops can be scheduled to discuss committees.
Then I would suggest that we also, if we decide to do a workshop, wait until April 6th, when Commissioner Fisher Street's back.
So Commissioner Johnson, I think your motion would be a motion to defer and schedule or defer for 60 days and schedule a workshop in the intervening time period to discuss committees, would be the motion.
So moved.
Any other discussion of this matter?
Question, would y'all like to have it before the April 6th meeting, or right, I mean, I mean, so you have a little time before the meeting, if we need to talk, need to talk about it more? Or do you want to have it the night of the meeting, and then go right into the meeting? I'm talking about the workshop.
5:30?
We need an hour and a half.
Didn't you suggest 60 days, Mr. Carter?
60 days.
Well, 60 days would be the April.
Yeah, for the vote.
Meeting, and so my, my thought was, the mayor said that the April 6th meeting, when Commissioner Street would be back, but that would essentially allow you 60 days to get a workshop scheduled, which, which again would be, since you're all going to be there, it would be a, it would need to be, it'd be a public meeting or publicly advertised. And, and really, rather than a workshop, it's really a special call meeting that will serve as a workshop, so to speak, so. I, I think what Mr. Doherty was suggesting is having that meeting essentially. So I think what Mr. Doherty was suggesting is having that meeting essentially the night of the meeting, just before it. So I think that's the will of the board to decide the scheduling, if they'd want to do it the night before, if they want to give them, just schedule it with the next 60 days. We have some time if it's going to be deferred for 60 days, so. Oh, April 6th, I'm sorry, 30 days, correct. Yeah, still in February in my head. It was such a short month.
So we would have the workshop at 6 and vote on it at 7 or so during the meeting?
I think that was Mr. Doherty's suggestion, which would save you from being here an extra night. Yeah.
Surely we don't need more than an hour to determine who's on committees.
Mayor, last meeting, there was a discussion about the item deferred tonight. Maybe Mike could present some stuff at a workshop at Commissioner Johnson's request. So I don't, maybe we could have two workshops that night where we talk about committees and we talk about that 9A from tonight.
I think where we are right now, there's a motion that's been made to defer the item for 30 days until the April 6th meeting and schedule a workshop. I don't think we need to agree tonight when the workshop's going to be scheduled. Mr. Doherty can get in contact with the mayor and figure out the input and decide whether it should be that night or not, unless you want to tell him tonight when you want the meeting. But I don't necessarily think that affects our vote presently. We don't have to decide that tonight. It'd have to be a special call meeting that's scheduled.
So could you?
So you're saying, you're saying just we will do the workshop whenever we schedule it, but it's going to be back on the agenda on April 6th? So I need to amend my motion from 60 days to 30 days?
Yeah, I misspoke. I misspoke and that's my apology. I was fixated on 60 days.
I'll just restate the motion that I will, that we will have this put back on the agenda April 6th when the five of us are here, hopefully, and we will, maybe the mayor can get with Tom and somehow we'll figure out the best night to have a workshop. That's my motion. But I'm perfectly fine with doing it prior to the meeting and like Commissioner Butler said, having both workshops that night, discussing both issues, especially if Mike is back and can, has the information for us. I think that makes perfect sense.
That is my preference. How about the rest of the board?
That'd be fine. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Johnson?
Butler.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10C passes, I'm sorry, 10B passes 4-0. For deferral. Passes for deferral, 4-0. Item 10C, Resolution 09-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of one Board of Commissioner member to the Parks and Landscape Board. I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Hall to the Parks and Landscape Board. Any discussion?
Do you realize I'm already on the Board of Zoning Appeals also? I think we had to have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting and I was one that was suggested to do it that night.
Are you saying you don't want to be on the Parks and Landscape Board?
You know, it doesn't matter to me. That's, you know, my preference, but I'm not, I'm letting y'all know that I'm also on another board, too, that I'm assuming that will be approved tonight, too. So I'm.
With that being said, Mayor, I would tell the board that I would welcome be appointed to that committee and any committees that anyone doesn't want to be part of, I would be glad to serve the city.
Mr. Hall, are you stating that you would not like to be on the Board of?
Well, I just didn't want to be on two boards and somebody else be left out, so to speak. So, you know, I'm just letting you know that I've already served on the Board of Zoning Appeals because there was a need for a meeting to be held, so.
So who made the motion?
I did.
Hey, is that, do you still, do you retract your motion or do you want to? He has not rejected the nomination, so I think now it's up to you whether you want to retract your motion or not.
Can you?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so the second's been withdrawn, so Mayor, now it's your motion that remains unseconded.
Okay, I need to ask a question. Were you appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
It was just a need for a meeting and I was told that I needed to be the one there, so.
So who appointed you to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I'm not sure.
We voted on it in a meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't remember.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't remember that, but, okay.
The reason I brought it up is, you know, I don't want to keep anybody out of a position that would be needed. You know, if somebody wants to take the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm good with that.
I'm going to withdraw my motion and y'all can figure it out, so.
I will say this, I've already been invited to the Parks and Rec Board Monday night, so I don't know whether they assumed I was on it at that time, so, you know, I'm sorry.
I think everyone considered that was your desire, so that's why I made the motion.
Okay. I'll accept this, okay.
Well, now it's been retracted, so we need to start over.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Hall to the Parks and Landscape Board.
Second.
Call the question.
Any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10D, Resolution 10-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of two citizen members to the Parks and Landscape Board. If we have citizens who would like to serve on this board, we would like to hear from you. So please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and just give us a little information about yourself.
Thank you, Board. I'm Zach Liston. I live at 7311 Sutton Place. I just moved there with my family a year ago yesterday. We have my wife Tatiana, three boys, six, five, and three months. Yes, it was an accident, but because of those guys and I have deep roots of Williamson County. I grew up in Grassland and then crossed the interstate and lived in Britwood. And the reason I want to get involved with the Parks and Landscape is I had never heard of Bowie Park until I moved to Fairview and knowing that it's the largest and best park in the county, I'm like, everybody needs to know about this. We need to put as many resources into this area. And I just love Fairview since we've gotten out here. We've wanted to be out here for a couple of years. So Zach Liston, thanks for considering.
My name is Almar Mobley, 7303 Cox Run Court, Fairview. I know we're running late, so I'm not going to spend too much time up here, but just quickly, I've been a resident here for 15 years, been a lifelong resident of Williamson County, raised my daughters here. My wife is a teacher and, you know, all the parks here are near and dear to us. You know, they're important in the lives of my children and all the children of the community. And as we grow, it's going to be important to maintain and nurture all of our green spaces as those precious places for everyone to, you know, enjoy their lives. So that's all I have. I appreciate the opportunity and the privilege to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dodaro, 7551 Cherokee Hills Road, Fairview. I've been a member, well, I've been a resident since May of 2000. I am a lawn and landscape single proprietor, work for myself. I do have three residential customers here in Fairview. I don't do any commercial work, so I'm not looking to grow, develop that business. In fact, I'd like to retire that business and do something else. But I am a member of the American Legion and another veteran organization here in Fairview, so our big focus is on Veterans Park over on Highway 96. I am a member of the Friends of Bowie Park. Our focus is on Bowie Park and I'm definitely excited about trying to grow and develop and preserve History Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Sutton, 7414 Blue Ridge Court. My wife, my two boys, and I moved here in 2016 and we've enjoyed Fairview ever since. I've been a coach for the Fairview Titans for three years and this past year, year number four, I was the director of football, so I oversaw the PUEs, the minors, and the majors. This will be my third year as the defensive coordinator for the football team at the middle school. I'm a small business owner based here out of Fairview, but before that I worked in hospitality for 20 years, so I have a lot of experience with multimillion dollar operations, working with many different people of different backgrounds, vendors, and creating teams and then working amongst those teams. So I appreciate the privilege and thank you for listening.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that, for one of the two citizens to be Mr. David Dodaro.
I would like to see Mr. Mobley be one of the others.
So we have.
I'll add to that, was it Lister?
Liston.
Liston and Mr. Sutton. Put them all in nomination.
So we have all four nominated.
Are we going to paper ballot, Mr. Attorney?
No, I think that we can just do a real call and start with the first one.
You know, I'm excited that all four want to be on it. I just wish we could have all four of them.
I think it's a credit to the city that you have four people that want to be on any committee. I think that's a great thing, so. But the proper way, I think, to do it, you have four people nominated, so I think you start with the first one and the first two to get a majority vote, then the resolution can be amended to include those two names, so.
So I just call a name and?
I think we start with the first one.
Mr. David Dodaro.
And we can do a real call and if he gets, if he gets, we'll just start at the top and the first two that get a majority, majority votes will fill the resolution, then we'll vote on the amended resolution. Unless someone has a better way to do it, but that's what I would suggest.
Take them in order.
So let me ask a question. Does the resolution say that there's only two citizens? I'm sorry, how many? Let me rephrase. How many citizens are appointed to this board?
You have seven members, one member from the chief legislative board, and apparently there's two openings tonight. The one opening expires June 30th, 2024, and the second opening expires June 30th, 2025. And so this would be, this would be for the, if we're going to do them in order, we need to select the two first and then we'll need a motion to amend the resolution and insert the names where you want them, in space one or space two.
I might make it easier. I don't know that the board will.
I agree, I agree with you. I know what you're saying.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the resolution.
Yes.
To allow for nine members on the board and all four will be appointed this evening.
I second that.
They want to be involved, we want them.
Absolutely. We want all of you involved, so can we?
That's the motion and it's been seconded. If there's any debate, and then we can call the question and you can vote on it.
Call for question.
Ms. Jones will have to redo the resolution tomorrow and then I'll sign it when it's done, so.
And Mayor, one other thing. The last gentleman that spoke, Mr. Sutton, I did not receive an application for him. I don't have his proof of residency and his voter. I don't know if he turned them into someone else, but I didn't get an application with that stuff.
Mr. Sutton, are you able to?
Have my voter recollection.
Are you able to get that to Ms. Jones tomorrow?
The other issue, I think, is we need to say when the terms end, because right now, the way this resolution is written, one term ends 6/30/2024 and one ends 6/30/2025. I'm not sure when this commission was established and so I don't know what the other term, terms are.
So we.
So I don't know how that affects, what you're doing tonight affects the underlying legislation.
Could we have two end on the, on 24 and two end on 25?
We can, or we can have them all end in 25. They're going to rewrite the resolution, it's whatever we tell them.
Sorry, one more thing. The terms are for three years apiece. These two terms that are being filled tonight are terms that was vacated early by members who stepped down.
Yes.
So if you point two people to fill these terms, then the two new members would technically get a new three-year term.
That's what I was going to say, so let, we'll have two members have a three, they'll go for three years and then two to fill in for the vacated seats.
Can I ask a question to two of the candidates?
Yes.
The two that I nominated, would y'all be willing to take the 24 and 25 expiring terms?
Sure.
Which one of you would rather have the 24 term or the 25 term?
I'll do the 24.
That makes it easy.
Because you can always come back and do that.
24?
Yes.
Now, if you're listed in 25.
Okay. So Liston, 25.
As long as she's clear, you okay?
Sutton, 24. Mobley and Dodaro, you would have the new two, the new three-year terms.
Ms. Jones, tomorrow to correct the resolution, she can work on it, send it to me and we'll verify it's correct and we'll get it signed and sealed.
And you'll give her the documentation she needs.
Yeah, just, Mr. Sutton, just make sure that you get that information to Ms. Jones.
If you'll give her your email address tonight, she will.
Mayor, I have one announcement to the new members. There's a meeting, 7 o'clock, Ms. Trolle. 7 o'clock at the Triangle School Monday night. Do y'all know where the Triangle School is since you're new residents? Okay.
It's called the Historical Village.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we've appointed members to the 2024 term, the 25 term, and then the two new three-year terms for the expanded committee that will now consist of nine instead of seven, so it would be appropriate to vote on it.
Ms. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
I know Commissioner Johnson made the motion.
Yes, it was Johnson, Anderson.
Anderson, okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye. Mayor, I'm going to accuse myself from item E. I have a client that represents, has interest in this property.
Okay. Item, item 10D. Okay. Item, item 10D passes 4-0. Item 10E, Resolution 11-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for reserves on Chester subdivision. City engineer Kevin Blackburn.
Thank you. Yes, so this one is one I mentioned earlier, is the first site development agreement that we put together under this new documentation that I worked on with Mr. Carter. And it cleans up a lot of the things that were in the previous agreement and makes it a lot more easy to follow. At the recommendation of Mr. Carter, it was, it's, for every site development agreement moving forward, they'll come to this board as an item on the agenda to be voted on, basically giving you, Mayor, the authority to sign that agreement. This project was passed by the planning commission back on May 10th of 2022, Resolution PC 40-22. The bonds for Sections 1 and 2 have both been set, and they're listed in that agreement.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to know who's here representing the developer. You, the developer? All right.
Name and address for the record.
Tim Mangrum, 7326 Fernvale Road, Fairview.
Kevin, you're just saying this is the first one under the new?
That's correct.
And Mr. Carter, you worked on this with him, and everything's in order?
I did. I, I believe it's in much, much better order. I had looked at the, the agreement that the city had been using previously, and I, I felt for staff, Mr. Blackburn and our planner, because it just wasn't in, in good order. So I think what's before you is in much better order. And those are all things the developers required to do anyway, under our code. Not all cities use site development agreements. It's actually required by your zoning code to enter into a site development agreement. It's a little bit duplicative, in my opinion, because the developer has to abide by all the city ordinance's standards, site development agreements, and everything else that's vested with the project. But, but that's what our zoning code requires. That agreement is much cleaner than the one the city was using before. This board should be approving it because it's an obligation of the city, and, and by, by approving it, they're authorizing the mayor to sign it. I'm not sure how they were being signed before I held this seat, and why they weren't being approved by the mayor or by the board, and then for the mayor to sign it. But I've worked with Mr. Blackburn, and in order to get that, in order to get that the way it should, should be. So I appreciate staff's help, and, and I think that's much improved over what you had before.
Mr. Mangrum, do you have any questions or concern about what we're about to vote on this evening?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Johnson, Hall, any other discussion? Ms. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes 3-0, one recusal. Item 10F, Resolution 12-23, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent with RS 40 zoning and approving a plan of service. 7409 Crowcut Road, 12.04 acres, map 046, parcel 023.01, and zero point, I'm sorry, 023.06.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is anyone here representing this project?
Hello, my name's Duncan Otter. I live at 7409 Crowcut Road here in Fairview.
I heard you speak before at a previous meeting, and you are willfully wanting to come into the city. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Has there been a plan of services? Is that part of this, or is it, is there one before the board? With every annexation, there should be a plan of services.
It's section one of this document.
All right, good. I was looking forward to make sure. I'm glad it's there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Will you call the roll, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Motion, item 10E passes. Sorry, 10F passes 4-0. Item 10H, Resolution 14-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Keystone Business Solutions and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. City manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I've been here, we've had, we've gone through quite the different routes on IT services. And I believe we've come to a situation where we want to give this a little bit of time to decide if this is the way we want to go. I've, I've gone back and forth on hiring a new IT director, hiring someone to help him, but this, this company has, with this agreement, has agreed to supply us with onsite support three days a week. If you run the numbers to get a, come, to compare, apples to apples, I'd say we're about $80,000 in the good going with Keystone when you look at benefits, and, and it'd probably take two people to get even close to the service they provide. So I'm, I just request that you guys approve, let the mayor sign this contract, and hopefully, when, when your equipment comes in, we can get you set up very quickly. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Did you, how many companies did you check with in pricing?
We had been working with this company previous, previously, so we have not checked with any other companies. I have talked to a couple, but did not get hard quotes. Dylan Pine, our previous IT director, had already been working with Keystone to get some other projects that he had going on, getting some support from them.
This $118,800, are you going to take it out of the same fund the lights came from?
Out of operating?
Yes, sir.
See how these would, I agree with Commissioner Butler. These would be good going to the budget committee or the finance committee. I may have fallen asleep a minute ago, but I don't know if anybody mentioned that figure before I mentioned it. So we would have been just passing something the citizens had no idea how much expenditure was.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I don't think there's a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Darty, what do we, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may.
Thank you.
What do we spend currently on, on IT? Is it around that, that range? We're using outside services now. We used to have an IT employee?
Yes, the, currently, the increase will be $4,500 a month. We're paying $5,400 for off-site support, so they remote in, and we pay a fee if they have to come out onsite, per hour fee. And then the rest of the money that we pay to them is for our services management, like our Office 365, different software products.
Will they handle website, or is that in a separate?
As separate.
Okay. Mayor, that's just my question of, you know, if we, if our IT budget is X, so we're going to be $4,500 more, so we'll be roughly 50 grand a year more is what this would cost on the, from an employee standpoint for IT.
Correct.
Where we'll have somebody onsite three days a week.
Correct.
And always have availability to call, or every day, yeah.
Did they give an option, just curious, for less days a week than three with a lower cost?
We want five days, but we, we settled on three. I mean, it's just, you never know when, when a police officer's body cam goes down or, or laptop goes down, or you need to, you need some, you don't need to wait five days. And even if, if you need to print, or you need to set up a phone, or set up a, a new workstation, or something that, you know, it's, it's sometimes, some of us on staff can do, but it's not in our, in our wheelhouse to do that type of stuff, and we, we need, we need help there. It's obvious. And I, there was not a, there was not, we, we wanted, we wanted more, not less, but, you know, I, I didn't get a quote for less. Thank you.
But you did get a quote for more?
No, that's, that's what they felt comfortable providing.
Offer three days a week?
Yes.
Could you clarify what you said a moment ago about them changing, or charging per hour, per visit, or whatever you said a minute ago? I may have misheard.
Yes, they charge per hour if they send somebody out now. And they do not charge for the drive-out, but just the time on, on, on the property.
And that is in excess of the 118?
Yes.
And what's that hourly rate?
150 an hour.
And that is in there, so 150 an hour.
How quick is the response time if the fire department was to have some issues, or the police department was to have some issues?
If they needed to have somebody out here, it's, it's, at least, it's usually about a two-hour drive. They're on the other side of Donaldson.
Other side of Donaldson, Forti Airport.
Yes.
So would this be a contract situation yearly, or?
Yes, this is an annual contract.
So we would reevaluate after a year if?
Yes.
We chose to try to figure a different situation?
And yes.
Did you get them to agree to no travel charges?
I don't, we just, I don't believe we've ever been charged any time. I believe it's just on, when they're onsite.
Because this calls for plus travel charges, is the way it reads. It's 150 an hour plus travel costs. And then in-person or remote, after hours or weekends, it's 225 an hour. This is all in excess of the 118,800 that's guaranteed.
That's, that's for onsite. Well, out of it, to my knowledge, we've never had anybody out here after hours or on the weekends.
So what happens if the police officer's body cam goes down at 2:00 in the morning? The, the police officer at 4:00 in the afternoon gets his fix, but the one at night doesn't?
Well, we, they're, we're hoping to have it set up where there's, there's some spare, where he can, he can grab a, an extra one. I'm not sure that that's totally set up, but I know that's the plan. As far as if, if one goes down, we've got, he can, he can grab a different one, and, and they fix the one that's in, needs repair.
Have any current staff members had any issues getting these people to respond or get things fixed or anything? You're shaking your head, yes.
I mean, they, some, sometimes you get a voicemail, but they, they, they're pretty receptive to calling you back within 30 minutes or so. It's, I've, I've been able to get ahold of somebody. I think, I don't know, I can't speak for all employees, but I feel, I feel like I've been responded to in a, in a timely manner.
The person that we would have here three days a week, do they live here? I mean, not, I mean, like Nashville or close?
They would be, they would be a Keystone employee. We would have, we would have no bearing on their salary or anything. They would be Keystone's employee.
Did, did we lose our IT person? Was the salary defunded in the budget process? Did they just retire, or?
He, he resigned and, and took a job in Florida.
And at no point did we want to fill that position again? I'm just asking a question, because I wasn't here. I don't know.
We, we, and, and as I stated earlier when I started, it's, it's a, we're still in the, I feel really solid about Keystone's service, but it's not working without anybody onsite to help with stuff that we need somebody onsite for. If, and a lot of times when you call somebody, and I don't, most of our employees do not know the IT lingo, and it's kind of hard to explain to them what's wrong, and with somebody here onsite, that, it, it just, I, it would just make everything run so much smoother and easier when, when we do have bumps.
I agree with you on the onsite standpoint, and for $118,800 a year, plus an unlimited amount of extra dollars that could be charged in a year's time, I think we ought to have a five-day-a-week person here, and I think we ought to advertise for an IT person to be a full-time employee of the City of Fairview, and I'm sure they'll take the job for a whole lot less than that, and plus have benefits. So I don't know what the range is. I don't know what we paid the previous person. I don't know what average is, but I would say you, as the city manager, could, could handle that. I just, I think this contract is too open-ended, and we don't know what it's going to cost us, so I won't support it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I feel, I agree with that statement. Have we, do you know, have we ever posted the IT job to accept applications or review, to refill that position?
We have not. The, um, we would have to look at it, do we want to keep, whether or not it's Keystone, another company to help manage our software services? Or it, it's, it's a two-man, a minimum of two-man job if, to do, to get anywhere close to what Keystone will provide, especially with somebody onsite. It's, I think if we hired somebody to do what their onsite person would do, would probably be in our best interest, especially early on. We could do that probably for less than $4,500 a month, but I don't know, it would be close. And then, I don't know, we would have to decide how Keystone, I don't know how much Keystone wants one of our employees, knowing their, their business, and, and how, how. What Keystone does not want is to have somebody that, that's going to maybe break security in their company or any, for anything. I mean, I don't know how, how, it may could work, but it, I, I think there may be. I mean, I don't know how, how, it may could work, but it, I, I think there may be some issues as well.
Mayor, does Keystone work, traditionally, did Mr. Pine work with Keystone prior? Were they in connection where Keystone was a backup handle on our services? We had onsite IT guy?
Yes, Dylan, Dylan was our IT director, and he had, he had been working with Keystone to help him.
What was his salary?
I believe it was probably in the seventy-five to eighty-thousand dollar range.
And then, we paid Keystone forty-five hundred on top of that?
No, we paid for, we paid for, I'd have to go back and look at the bills back when Dylan was here to tell you a hundred percent, but we did, usually what Dylan did, if he didn't know how to do something, he would call them. And, and they would help walk him through it.
And they charged hourly, is that how it works?
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be anything a new IT person and Mr. Robel couldn't do together. Mr. Robel did everything for the city for a decade. And if he's, if I just heard tonight, that gentleman's still doing the website and everything, I think that's our go-to person.
Well, if, I will look further if the board wishes. This, I think, we were, I was hoping to, to be able to see if this relationship with Keystone would work. If the board wants me to, to look at other options, that's, I'm, I'm more than willing to do that.
What will we do in the meantime, while you're looking for other options? Are they still on-call for us?
Yeah, we'd still be, be doing like we're, we're doing right now. We're paying that one-hundred-and-eighteen minus forty-five hundred a month.
Typically, when we pay them the, the fee of one-hundred-and-fifty, two-twenty-five, whatever it is, do you know how much that typically costs us a month? Just because I'm wondering about, we're paying forty-five hundred a month for Keystone, and then, right now, we're paying them an hourly fee, right?
No, only if they come out onsite on the hourly fee. I can, I can pull the invoice, and we can go through it line by line if you want to.
I mean, so we, we've had to have them come out and work on things, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, that hourly fee's being paid on top of the forty-five hundred?
Oh, forty-five hundred was what they were going to charge us to have a person onsite three days a week.
So we're paying the five thousand?
We're paying, yes, fifty-four hundred. I think the total on there, if you see the, if you look on the contract, is ninety-nine hundred for off-site support. I mean, support totally, fifty-four of it is off-site, and forty-five hundred would be onsite.
So if we pay the fifty-four hundred, if we need someone onsite, how does that work? If they have to come here?
They drive out here and work, and then bill us.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So it's on top of the fifty-four hundred?
Yes, the fifty-four hundred is for, for off-site support. Like if they remote in and fix something, and our.
So typically, how many times do, have we had to have them, say in the last month, come out and, and work on something that's down?
I think I paid six hundred dollars this last month for off-site service.
For them to come here and work on something?
And it's been more than that, and it's been less. I mean, it's just, depends on what's happening.
Do you know where they come from? Just, just because I'm wondering?
East side of, east side of Donaldson.
Okay, that, that's what I was getting at. So they're, they're Nashville?
They say it's about a two-hour drive. With, if, if traffic, I guess.
Okay, yeah, that's stretched. So they're saying it's a two-hour drive and charge us for two hours, when it probably takes about forty-five minutes?
I don't, I don't, I'll look at the bill, but I don't, I don't think we're being charged for travel time.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll double-check that.
But we are being charged for travel time, right?
I don't think.
Oh, oh, okay. So, this says travel time, but maybe they choose not to try, uh, charge us for travel time?
I'll look at the bill. I mean, I'm, I'm not.
It may not be now, but this says they're going to.
So is that a new contract?
Two B says a hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour plus travel costs. Travel costs doesn't just mean by the hour, that could mean meals, that could mean everything, costs. Whatever they deem a cost.
If they charge us a hundred, if they say it's two hours from Donaldson, it would be three hundred dollars to get here, and then three hundred dollars to get back, which would be six hundred dollars just in travel time?
Hire an employee that are here five days a week.
Okay, so, if we hired an employee, and they were here five days a week, would they have to work with someone like Keystone to keep things running?
Depends on who you hire.
I don't, yeah, they.
I, I just don't know how it all works. I'm, I'm not an IT, so I'm trying to get.
A legitimate IT person should be able to come in here and do everything on their own, especially one eighty thousand dollars, I would think. They could write their own code and, and do everything. But what I was saying, Mr. Robel did it for us for a decade. I don't know why he's not doing it anymore, and that's none of my business. I wasn't a decision-maker on why he's not, or maybe he went away on his own. But if he's still doing the city website, I'm pretty sure he and the new person we hired could work together and get everything done. There's no need for Keystone, or any other.
So, Mr. Robel helps us still currently?
He's our host, website host, yes.
And he's an IT specialist as well?
I'm not sure what his background is. I know that's, that's, that's how he makes his living.
And he's local here to Fairview?
I think he may have moved out of the city limits, but he's, he's a lot closer than Donaldson.
But he's been, like, doing all the IT for twenty-five years, or?
I don't know about twenty-five years, but it's been over, well over a decade. If he's still been involved the six, seven years I was missing, he did ten-plus, maybe, maybe fifteen of those.
Do you know, like, did he just decide not to do that anymore? Or, do you have any idea?
I have no idea. I've, I've been working with him here recently to refresh our website, and start getting ready to refresh the park website, but.
So do we just pay him on a contract basis?
Yes, he, he sends a bill monthly. It's, uh, it's usually between four and six hundred dollars. Right now, it's four hundred, I believe, with some of the additional services he's doing. It may go up a little bit than that.
Beats forty-five hundred.
Mayor, may I make a recommendation? I guess first, my, let me make an observation first. People that typically do website and website design are, are different than the IT professionals that set up station and do software and hardware. There are some of the same skills, but they're different, different specialties. I don't know this gentleman, so I have no idea about him. But I, I would recommend that you defer this item for either thirty or sixty days, and allow Mr. Doherty to do some further investigation and cost analysis, and provide that to you by email for you to look at, and, at our, and then we can discuss it further. But it, it sounds like he needs to do some more research along the lines of what Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Mayor were, were asking about. Commissioner Mayor, Commissioner Anderson, it's getting late, so.
Mayor Anderson.
Mayor Anderson, thank you. You knew who I was talking about.
Absolutely. And I can tell you, if it's the same, Mr. Robel, it's his first name Greg, he did everything from coming here to setting computers up, to setting the phone system up, to setting the audio-visio room, helping Keith for years when we did upgrades in this very room. So, I mean, he's fully capable in all aspects of IT. Now, whether he's willing to do it or not, I don't know. But, sounds like you're fixing to have time to find out.
Any other discussion, or would we like to amend the, amend the motion?
Mayor, make a motion to amend the, make a motion to amend the motion to defer thirty days? Mr. Doherty, would that be appropriate, or sixty days be better, Suda?
I think thirty would be fine.
To amend, amend this item, to defer it for thirty days to the April sixth meeting?
Second.
Butler Johnson, will you please call the roll, Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item ten H passes four-zero.
Hold on, the amendment passed, we have to vote on the original motion.
Yeah, and.
Sorry.
Yes, the motion to defer, yep.
The motion for defer.
For deferral passes four-zero.
Was it a motion to approve?
It was.
The first motion was by Comis, Vice Mayor Butler, and seconded by Mr. Hall. But then Vice Mayor Butler amended his motion just now to defer to April sixth.
So we have to vote on the first?
I think he amended his motion, amended the motion, so we've voted to approve the amendment. Now we need to vote on the main item, which is the actual deferral, the actual item to April sixth.
Thank you. Call call, please.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Motion passes four-zero for deferral. Item ten I, Resolution fifteen dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for ViaSat satellite project city engineer Kevin Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is very much like the item E, Resolution eleven twenty-three. This one is the same thing, is authorizing you to sign the site development agreement for the satellite project out by Meeting Place Church on ninety-six. And that one was approved by Planning Commission on August the ninth of twenty-twenty-two. That's it.
Is there anyone here to, that represents the, okay, thank you.
I believe the ViaSat representative apologized. She was, she took ill earlier this week, and, and said that she wouldn't be able to be here. She had been planning to be here. I talked to Mr. Blackburn, and, and really, it's not necessary for her to, to be here. The, I've reviewed the agreement. This agreement is already in process. When I became city attorney, and I think most, most of the work had been done, I made some minor changes in conjunction with Mr. Blackburn to kind of clean it up. But I, I think it's appropriate, it's ready for you to vote on.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question for the attorney. What, what do you deem the determining factor on whether or not a member needs to be here before us when we vote or not? Sixteen years of previous experience, it was deferred.
Well, I, I think that would, I'm not aware of the city's prior experience. There's nothing, I don't think there's anything, the reason why I said that, there's nothing in this agreement that I think is really debatable. It's the city's requirements, it's the city's standards, and they're agreeing to follow them in their project. And so, I, I, the reason why I said that, Commissioner, is I don't think anything, they're gonna add anything. All they're gonna say is, they agree to do it, but they're gonna do that when they sign it.
Well, let me ask you this. If that, if that was the case, why, why do we not receive the executed copy with the developer signing it first? Why is it not brought to us as they agree to this, instead of us voting for it? And then, they might sign if they might not. I realize they can't do the project without it, but why would she not have already signed this if she couldn't be here?
I, I don't know what the city's process has been before I, before I started, but until the city approves it, until the city approves it, it's, it's, it's nothing. So, if this board would rather the developer sign it, understanding that it's contingent on you approving it, then I'm sure Mr. Blackburn can handle it like that in the future. But I don't.
That's why I asked Mr. Mayor when he was standing at the lectern there, whether or not he was in agreement with what it stated. I don't want to approve something and them say, no, that's, that's.
I think that's fine, if that's the direction the board is giving Mr. Blackburn, and I think he'd be, he's nodding his head, and that's not a problem.
I have no problem, if you're saying do this tonight, and she's ill, I understand things happen, so, I have no problem supporting that. But in the future, I think they should be signed when they come to us.
I don't, I don't disagree, and I think that's a, a good process, and I'm, I think we can accommodate that. I, I can tell you, Commissioner Johnson, that the email traffic by and between ViaSat indicates they agree to all the terms, and they're ready to sign it. So I don't have any, I don't have any doubt in my mind that we're gonna approve it, that we're gonna sign it, and then they won't. I don't, I don't think that's what's going on here, so.
Move for approval.
Second.
Johnson, Butler, will you please call the roll, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Ten I passes four-zero. Item number eleven, communication from mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Mayor, I have nothing tonight. I think it's been a long enough night.
Commissioner Johnson?
I have a couple of questions. First, for our attorney, we received an, an email this week about a possibility of something, and I wanted to know, what is your interpretation of the protocol for calling an executive session? Or legal meeting, whatever you want to call it?
Sure, an executive session is an attorney-client meeting. It's generally called by the attorney, which would be the city attorney in this case. It would be for anything, it would be for a matter that's either threatening litigation against the city, or actual litigation against the city. That's the only time we can meet in executive session. Those meetings would be reserved for me to tell you what the case is about. During that meeting, there is no deliberation, and the deliberation about what we ultimately do has to occur in public. So they're of limited utility. They can't be called just because there's, there's something that's uncomfortable, or might make somebody upset. It's, the, the exception to Toma is extremely limited for litigation or threatening litigation against the city, or by the city.
Do you have a state statute that, that shows that you're the only person that can call such a meeting?
Established by case law, it's not even in Toma, there's cases, and I can get those cases to you. But that's, that's absolutely the fact. MTA's website is replete, if you look up executive session or attorney-client meeting. That's the only time those meetings are appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Tom, it looks like we're going to be possibly hiring for other positions. Of the two positions that you just hired for, I know there were some possible discrepancies or missed applications or something. Have you reached out to everyone that has applied that did not get an interview?
Yes, sir. I do believe I have.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I have.
Okay. Going forward in hiring people, what is your, what is your plan gonna be for determining who does and doesn't get an interview?
Qualifications, but I'll, I'll reach out, it's, I'll, I'll, if they're qualified, I'll interview them.
The only reason I'm asking that is because there was three or four different people that said they didn't get an interview for things that you had posted recently. And that's the only reason I'm asking. And I, I cannot speak to their qualifications, because I only know what I've been told. So I'm not, I'm not saying you didn't do right, I'm just making sure the ones that didn't get an interview, you at least called them and thanked them for applying or something.
Thank you, and I'd be more than willing to, to look at whoever's, and if I've made them, if I've. them, if I, if I need to talk to somebody, I'm, I'm more than willing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Call.
Okay. Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. If you're still here tonight, thank you for sticking it out with us tonight, and to staff. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, too.
Okay, so, um, first of all, our, um, boys, uh, worked really hard, and they're still going, but they've worked really hard, our, our basketball team, high school basketball team, and they did, uh, fall short tonight, but, uh, they will have another game Monday at seven PM, uh, in Giles County. So, if anybody can be there, let's go support them in Giles County. This is a one-and-out. So, they lose, we're out, they win, they continue. So, um, just because they fell short tonight doesn't mean that was the end for them. And, uh, they've done a great job and worked really hard, and so, I think we ought to, you know, try to get out there and support them if we can. I do want to mention that, uh, this is, um, March, and this will be our first month to have a fifth Thursday. We will have a town hall on that fifth Thursday. So, anyone who gets a little frustrated when we can't dialogue, this is your chance. So, make sure to come out, and we'll have all that advertised, um, however we advertise. So, um, thank you for hanging out with us and being here. I do want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Liston, Mr. Mobley, Mr. Dodaro, and Mr. Sutton for becoming new park board members. That's an advisory board that's very important to the Board of Commissioners. I know that y'all work really hard, and the group over here, uh, you know, with the, with the friends of the park, and also the other park board members, to get us the information that we need. I have Key to Triangle School, and if you need in or out, if, uh, Dr. Rice is not available, just let me know. As usual, I always tell everybody to please help keep Fairview beautiful, and let's pick up trash and not throw it out. Thank you, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.